Welcome, everybody, to our regular council meeting. It's today's Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022. We are holding this this meeting both in person here at City Hall and via Zoom. Under the Washington Ready Plan, members of the public may attend Liberty Lake City Council meetings in person at City Hall or via Zoom. Members of the public will be allowed to comment in person or via Zoom as described on the last page of the agenda. So without further ado, we'll just go ahead and get started. Before we do the invocation and whatnot, I have a bunch of yellow sheets for citizen comments, so thank you. So if anybody here who wants to speak and hasn't filled one of these out there on the table, that helps us make sure we have your contact information and everything. So and I will say, I usually do have Zoom up here at the same time. Microsoft Office doesn't seem to be working so tight. I know we will probably have some people in chat, so you're going to have to just tell me verbally instead of through this. So if you join me, we're going to have the invocation, pledge of, and then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us together today to do what serves the best interests of our of our city. Please, please help us be mindful and help us just open our hearts and our minds to our citizen comments. No matter what the topic, no matter what the what the comment is, please let us hear and listen and can take those all into consideration. We appreciate everybody who's come here tonight. It's great to see so many people involved in our community and wanting to make a difference. Please look over us as we have these deliberations tonight. And as always, please protect our first responders who keep us safe and allow us to have the freedoms that we have every day.
America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so sorry for the tight quarters, everybody. Struggling with the Zoom here, so I'll do my best to manage manually. I don't know what I did before Zoom. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order, and I'll do a quick roll call. Councilmember Cargill.
Here.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Van Orman.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Fullier.
Your.
Councilmember Baird. Why did I hear? And Councilmember Solberg.
Here.
And Councilmember Dunn is still out on family business. We have a motion to excuse him tonight.
I'll make the motion to excuse Councilmember Dunn.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second by Councilmember Solberg to excuse Councilmember Dunn. Any questions or comments? Right, not hearing or seeing any, all in favor of excusing Councilmember Dunn, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Councilmember Dunn is excused. All right, we are on to agenda approval. I will see when our presentation is moved to next meeting.
Item seven.
Yes. So let them move that that adjustment.
Yeah, so as the mayor just identified, we'll have no item seven. Now, some sparklations of special presentations that will be moved to a later date.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Well, had these be amended first?
Oh.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Can I get, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda, removing item seven.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Baird. Any questions, discussions? See any, all in favor of amending the agenda by removing item seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes, the agenda has been amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Great.
Second.
Thank you. Second by Councilmember Baird. Any questions, discussion? All right, not seeing any, all in favor of approving the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion passes, we have the an approved agenda. Okay, so we're up to citizen comments. And again, like I said earlier, it's great to see so many people here. We rarely have this much community involvement, so just just hopefully this continues even after tonight. There's always stuff going on. We would love to, you know, continue to hear from you guys. So for, I'm going to have the people here in the chambers do their comments first. Instead, I've got the the sheets. I think I've kept them in order that I received them. If I didn't, I apologize. I did my best. So just a few ground rules. So remember that it is truly citizen comments tonight. Citizen comments is not a period for back and forth with the council. We are here to listen to you. Please make sure we get your name and whether or not you are a citizen of Liberty Lake proper or not. You don't need to give a full address, just whether or not you are in the city limits or not. And you'll have each have three minutes. There will be a timer, as you see up on the board, very easy to see, and we will, we just stop you at your three minute mark. So after we are done with those people in the chambers, we'll go to anybody who's on Zoom. So we first, we have Maria Garcia Bachmann. Sorry, I shouldn't have messed that up. Thank you for coming. And so we'll make sure our microphone is on here. Chief, could you make sure that microphone's on? Chief, you make sure that microphone's on? Thanks.
All right. I fear this is out of context because I'm going at the beginning, and the main issue I'm here for is at the end.
Well, we we take comments on anything, so that's why we're here.
I am a mother. Many of you in this room are mothers. And when I hear mothers and fathers voice concerns, they do so from a place that is personal. This is personal. Most recently voiced concerned have been about choice. My body, my choice, which I find ironic. They have been about how school districts are operating and whether they can regulate personal choice. Concerns have been about teachers and not just what they teach children, but the choice to allow our children to participate in that learning. Now, as it was in the early 20th century, there are concerns about libraries and what they are trying to lend our children, because they are always the antagonists, right? But there's a conundrum. When exactly do I get my choice? These parents argue they must have a say in their children's education and how is it it is administered. They must have a say in what is taught in classrooms. They must have a say on what content is available to everyone from a public library, even if everyone doesn't live by the same values or beliefs. So naturally, school boards and teachers and administrators must listen to what these parents want. But when do parental responsibilities actually begin? That's the part where your child learns something in school and you supplement the learning. You ask your kids about what their day is and how it was and dig into what it was fine means. You volunteer in school and listen to what is being taught rather than getting secondhand information from a third party source. You go to the library with your child, and if that child picks out a book, no matter what section it comes from, you talk about why your child chose that book, because that's what parents are supposed to do. Learning starts at home, and the village that surrounds us does its part to influence our children toward making the right choices in their right time. But then we have a responsibility to reengage, so we close the loop, which allows us to know what our kids did during the in between time. It allows us to see from their perspective what they think they understand about what they are learning outside the home and determine how it applies to using, how we apply it using our value system. There are undoubtedly people in this room who know my children. I talk to my children. I likely know who some of your children are. Do you really think you know everything that goes on when you are not watching? And if you start banning books, do you truly believe your children won't find what they want to know somewhere else? Banning books will not be the end of whatever crusade you are on. Banning books is fascism. What free man or woman in this room among us supports the principle of fascism and is ready to let this be where the loss of our true freedoms begin?
I'm going to have to stop you, but it sounds like you're right on target. Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Okay, next up, we have Shawna Dean. And again, just make sure we have your name and whether you are live in the city limits or outside. Thank you.
Yep, my name is Shawna Dean, and I am within city limits. And my, as I said, my name is Shawna Dean, and I'm a citizen of Liberty Lake and a new member of the library, the Library Board of Trustees. Brad Hamlet, Kim Gerard are yeah, are also on the Library Board, and they are here in attendance tonight. In February of 2022, the Board of Trustees reviewed a complaint for the book Gender Queer by Maya Kobabi. The Board reviewed the book and the library's collection development policy and found that Gender Queer did align with the policy for adult materials. We, as a board, ask that the City Council uphold this decision.
Push you on pause for Senate City Attorney.
We don't need to have the visuals here while the comments are being made. If you want to put that up during comments.
You can have it during your citizen comments. Please don't disrupt the meeting. Go ahead, Shawna.
The Liberty Lake Municipal Library fully endorses the principles documented in the Library Bill of Rights and the Freedom to Read Statement of the American Library Association. Materials available in the library present a diversity of viewpoints, enabling citizens to make the informed choices necessary in a democracy. The Liberty Lake Municipal Library also selects a wide variety of library materials that satisfy the diverse interests of our community. The library upholds the right of the individual to secure these resources, even though the content may be controversial, unorthodox, or unacceptable to some. The library's varied collection is available to all. However, it is not expected that all of the collection will appeal to everyone. And again, we, as a board, ask that the City Council uphold the decision that the board made.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Next up, we have Mark Saba.
Haven't had a drink in 10 years. Almost swallowed my butt. I am a member or citizen of Liberty Lake also. Different subject. On item nine B, the City Council will be looking at ARP funds. And I just want to thank you for giving the nonprofits what they asked last year for 2020. Now it's time, we asked again, because most nonprofits weren't able to do any fundraising for 2021 also because of COVID. And again, yeah, consideration is being taken again to possibly allow funds to come to any nonprofit that applied for it. I applied for it again in lieu of for Winter Glow, so we can keep the lights shining every year over there at Orchard Park. And I just appreciate your consideration on possibly looking at what I requested, the 15,000 that we requested for 2021. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, next we have Lynn Atkins. Welcome.
So Lynn Atkins, and I am a resident of Liberty Lake. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. My comments this evening are on the recent request by a citizen to remove the book Gender Queer from the library shelves. I want to thank the library director and the library board and the City Council for their due diligence in regard to this request. I wish to share with you that I am opposed to the act of removing this book or others like it from a public library. I think that the American Library Association explains this best in their Library Bill of Rights and also in their Freedom to Read Statement. And I thank the Council for including those documents as attachments to tonight's agenda. I would like to share two quotes from the Library Bill of Rights. The first reads, "Libraries should provide materials and information presenting all points of view on current and historical issues. Materials should not be prescribed or removed because of partisan or doctrinal disapproval." The second item that I'd like to read is that libraries should challenge censorship and the fulfillment of their responsibility to provide information and enlightenment. And I want to express my thanks to the library director and the library board for committing themselves to those basic policies. I also have a quote from the American Library Association's statement on book censorship, and it reads as follows. "In recent months, a few organizations have advanced the proposition that the voices of the marginalized have no place on library shelves. To this end, they have launched campaigns demanding the censorship of books and resources that mirror that mirror the lives of those who are gay, queer, or transgender, or tell the stories of persons who are black, indigenous, or persons of color, falsely claiming that these works are submersive, excuse me, subversive, immoral, or worse." And I think the words used in regard to this book was pornographic and obscene. These groups induce elected and non-elected officials to abandon constitutional principles, ignore the rule of law, and to disregard individual rights, all to promote government censorship of library collections. The statement goes on, but I wanted to share this portion of it this evening. I do not know the individual who brought the library challenge. I do not know if they are part of one of these groups or not. Perhaps they were merely misled or used by others to forward that type of agenda, or perhaps it is merely coincidence. What I do know is that the chain of events and the attack on this book seem to mirror the statement that I read. And my personal moral code requires me to stand up and support the actions of our public library and everyone's right to read. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming. Hey, Jed Spencer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Jed Spencer. I'm from the River District, so I am a citizen here. I wanted to speak on the same issue on item 11F. Last night, I noticed a post on Facebook from a lot, an upstanding longtime citizen of our community who raised some questions and posed this to the community, the greater Liberty Lake community. What I was surprised to see was instead of civil engagement in civil conversation, lots of attacks being made on on this individual who who didn't post anything offensive, and she was simply asking questions and actually inviting people to come and engage in this conversation. I think what we're talking about here tonight is is intellectual freedom. Not not all speech or ideas deserve an audience. The freedom, the freedom of speech doesn't doesn't guarantee that everybody who produces a book or or a song or speaks in public that they deserve an audience. It only it only means that they they are allowed to say it. So our our public library should represent many different views, but we should be able to establish some sort of minimum standard of decency. So I know some people will say, you know, maybe it was the topic. Maybe it maybe it has to do with race, or maybe it has to do with sexual preference, but I don't think that has anything to do with it. We need to look at the content. And in this case, and the reason why I decided to come and do this, something I've never done before, is to speak on this idea that we need to have this minimum standard of decency. The images presented in this book are not appropriate for a a youth audience. And and my question is, one individual on the on the Facebook group brought up the idea that, well, you know, how audacious that that somebody's challenging not only the library director, but the but the Board of Trustees. They should just sit down and shut up. I don't like that idea, that we have this process for a reason. This gives us as citizens the ability to come and talk about these things. So I think at the end of the day, we're really talking about protecting children. So my recommendation at this time would be to remove this book from the library. And if not, at a minimum limit, who can check it out? And I think at at the the base of this, we're talking about a fundamental problem with the ability for the library board to select.
Time's up. Sorry, I've lost track of the clock. I apologize, Ted. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. Thanks. Thanks for whoever said that to bring my attention back to it. Next, we have Abby Schuster. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Abby Schuster. I am a resident of Liberty Lake. I may not be as eloquent as some of the other speakers, but I came to address the same topic. I believe that libraries are a place to explore, explore new lands, times, cultures, life experiences. Libraries open up a world to a community. A full range of genres, ideas, and life experiences need to be represented in this space. I want to thank our librarians and the library board for understanding this and continuing to maintain a variety of materials in our library. Just because something is offensive to someone, it's not grounds to have it removed. Everyone has a right to tell their personal story. If someone's memoir is okay and another's is not, you're essentially saying that that story or that life is shameful. No one has to read it. This book is not targeted towards a child audience. It is marketed as being in at least 15 or above or 18 or above. This is not a children's book. But there are individuals who need to see themselves represented in stories, in literatures, and in life experiences. And if that's available in a community, then that makes everyone feel welcome and part of that community. No one is asking you to check out that book for your children. No one's asking you to check out that book for yourself, but it's available if someone wants it. So I am in opposition to having this book removed from the library. I'm in opposition of having any book removed from the library.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Next, we have Natalie Goffin. Did I say that right? I have always messed it up, as long as I've known you. Thank you.
Natalie Goffin, I'm I'm in Liberty Lake, but not Liberty Lake proper. The city, I have exactly three minutes, so if you don't mind setting the clock. The time goes really well, and I worked really hard to get it all squeezed in. I have taught people how to thrive for 30 years, thriving in an art and science. Thriving is an art and science of self-awareness, self-policing, and living comfortably in one's own skin. Everyone, even trans folks, have the ability to thrive, the practice of self-awareness, mindfulness, prayer, bodily health, spiritual work, mindfulness, mindful relationships, and so on. This is an abundant universe, not a restrictive one. A wise, mature adult perspective is to understand that only restrictions, the only restrictions you have are those that you put on yourself. But alas, clown world, here we are, and here I am restricted to having to actually debate the issue of whether or not we are, we as a society even call this porn, and whether or not it is based, and whether or not it is directed at our kids, and whether or not we should provide our kids access to, like the librarian at Ridgeline High School, because yes, it was there, as well as our principal municipal librarians. Here's the bottom line. There's a side here that wants to normalize the hyper-focus on gender and hyper-focus on genitalia and what that genitalia is attracted to, period. This is akin to genitalia worship, where you define your narcissistic existence, exhibit A, mostly around those two factors, genitalia and gender. Well, Greeks and Romans tried this. It's called phallicism. It was a dominant religion in the ancient world with its emphasis on sex, orgies, genitalia, gender roles. Keeping in mind, this would include the practice of pedestrian, sending your 10-year-old off to learn how to sexually satisfy grandpa and uncle Mike. I've worked with victims of early onset sexualization and sexual trauma. Unequivocally, early onset sexualization learns to leads to a long list of negative behaviors such as narcissistic, exhibit A, personality disorder, and body dysphoria, to name just two. The purchasing librarian specifically stated it is not geared towards children. Really, let's talk about the awards. Number one award says, quote, "It is there to honor the best books for kids, tweens, etc." Award number two, "It is there to recognize graphic novels for ages 12 to 18." Award number three, "It is books written for adults that give that have special appeal to young adults, usually defined starting at 12." Anyone who knows me knows I am about the furthest thing from Prudish. I modeled for that one, sculpted by Steve Gavert's. I painted that one and took a selfie in the mirror. I asked Georgette, at the time that I founded, I started the Rotating Art Program at the Liberty Lake Library. I asked Georgette at that time, what would be appropriate in terms of hanging nudes at the library? She said, "Well, I don't mind, but it has to be appropriate, and it should be in the room where we can close the doors that's far away from the kids." That's all I need.
Thanks.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Ask a quick question. Can we ask the audience when both sides of this are speaking? There's a lot of smirking and and sneering going on and clapping, and obviously.
If we can please refrain from any any side comments, noises, whatnot, while people are speaking, we appreciate it. We're here trying to have a respectful conversation. We ask that you you provide everybody who's speaking with the same respect that you would want for yourself. We have Erin Zazada. Is she here? Hi, Erin.
Hi, I'm Erin Zazada. I lived in Liberty Lake for 10 years now. I'm just outside the county or the city line. Good evening, and thank you for your time and attention to this matter. First, let me say that when I began this process, after hearing about this book, my first question to the librarian was, can you please point me to the pornographic section? She immediately said there was no such section in the library. Second, while it was evident on the form I submitted that I did not read the book in its entirety, it wasn't for lack of trying. I couldn't get through it. I'd like to make clear that I don't believe in banning books, period. I don't believe in that at all. This is not a First Amendment issue. This is not an attack on LGBTQ groups. This is a fight against sexually explicit content directly aimed at minors. I'm fully aware that the material in question is located in the adult section of the library, but I have been told directly by the former head librarian, Joanne Percy, that they will allow anyone of any age to check it out. I'd also like to point out a small, yet key fact. In December, when I first found the book in the library, I noticed it had the bright red POW sticker on its spine. In fact, every graphic novel in the Liberty Lake Library had that sticker. These eye-catching stickers on the spines of the books help kids quickly locate comic style books. My son has read plenty of them. During my original communications with the head librarian, I pointed out that Gender Queer had this sticker. So I asked, why would an adult book need a sticker that attracted kids? Strangely enough, I've noticed that there are no longer any POW stickers on these books in the library, period. They're gone. Furthermore, I had also found this book in Ridgeline's high school collection. I had planned on addressing the CV board as well, but it turns out the book has been quietly removed sometime in the last six weeks. If I truly believe that this book was, number one, created and intended for an adult audience; number two, the public library had a policy of clearly marking books that contain pornography, so parents could easily identify them; and number three, they followed a clear standard on restricting minors to check out said books, I would not be here. Unfortunately, the head librarian has told me and provided documentation that the library cannot and will not play that role. It seems that the librarian and all librarians across the country lean heavily on the American Library Association, which was referenced tonight in multiple instances. It is a private, nonprofit, non-governmental organization who has written guidelines, including the Library Bill of Rights, which was mentioned, and the Freedom to Read Statement, to defend their processes. Let me restate that. A private organization is dictating to public libraries how they are expected to operate. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, and next we have Russell Neff. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you. My name's Russell Neff. I live in the city of Spokane. I came out here tonight because I saw this material here. It was shocking to me to see my grandmother was a librarian. And as a boy, you know, you ask certain things like, can this be in a library? Can that be in a library? I remember in high school, students getting wind of books that were far less pornographic than this. And we all flocked there, right? Because we were teenage boys and we wanted to see it, but guess what would happen? The librarian would pull it. My grandmother would say that certain things were not appropriate for the library. But I hear tonight, it's just funny, I hear some people who are here tonight supporting this stuff, and as my grandmother said, and even the librarian in my high school, kids will find it. So I'm I'm, I didn't come in here with a prepared speech, didn't even know if I would be able to speak because I showed up late. But I'm just, I'm shocked that we have adults that are allowing and supporting such materials in library and trying to, dare I say, slander people like myself and others that don't think it's appropriate and hiding behind some bill of rights that the predecessor to my speaking said is a private organization. So that's all I got off the cuff. Thanks.
Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, so somewhere along the line, I got my Zoom working, so I can see who's waiting on Zoom. We do have one, one person, and while we have that gentleman speak again, if anybody else here, we'll give you another chance if you want to speak during the citizen comment period, there's a yellow sheet over there. And I do apologize that the this topic's actually, you know, the last one on our agenda, and that's in
that the this topic is actually, you know, the last one on our agenda and that's in that's not in order to move it back to discourage people from staying, I just want to address that. We like to put the things that are required for running the city first so that they don't get shoved to the end because they they require some attention and contracts and whatnot. So it in no way was an attempt to push that off and get people to around. So we will go to Tom Agnew on Zoom. Welcome, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor Chris, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council, fellow citizens and city staff. My name is Tom Agnew. I live at twelve twenty South Star Lane in Liberty Lake, which is just outside of the city, although I'm a great admirer of the city and what's been done. On a much lighter note, something that occurs to me every year about this time, and I thought I'd suggest it. I grew up in the Lilac City, which as most of us may know is Spokane. Named the Lilac City for obvious reason, has a lilac festival. And if you can take a moment and look above the horizon to the hillsides, you'll see the spectacular bloom of the white flowers of the plants that combine with the yellow blooms of the balsa root plant. And between the two of them, it really is a quite spectacular, beautiful and somewhat distinguishing opportunity for we Liberty Lake residents and lovers to have our own possible flower named session. I'm reluctant to suggest any name for it, but I just wanted to call your attention to it and express my gratitude to all of you for the great work that you do and suggest that sometime in the future, we just might want to have a festival that happens to honor this week or so, as long as it doesn't rain and the wind doesn't blow, this will keep lasting. Usually that's not very long. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, so Todd, do we have anybody else who's on Zoom who wants to make a comment? Okay, one more chance for those in person, not seeing any hands or anybody running for those yellow sheets. Okay, we will go ahead and close out citizen comments and we will skip to item eight since our presentation has been moved to the next meeting. So first we have city council reports. Is there anybody on city council who'd like to report on anything that's been going on the last couple of weeks that they've attended or just wanted to inform us about? Councilmember Salberg.
I just had the pleasure of spending a couple of hours with the city of the valley Chamber of Commerce. They're looking forward to seeing several of us here and they have called those people. They seem to be really good partners and had an awful lot of really good questions. I know that our involvement has been pretty long-term there. I see them as a as a potential ally for some of our future transportation projects, infrastructure projects.
Yep, they've been a they've been a great, great partner, as you mentioned, and I'll mention when it comes time for my report on it, it's something that's upcoming with them. Any other council members? All right, so I guess that leaves it to me. So I apologize, council, I haven't gotten my my report out this week, yesterday between catalytic converter being stolen off of one of the Liberty Lake trucks, a suspicious package at the PD and other things going on. Got sidetracked a little bit. So so just a high level. We'll try to hit the fun stuff. Farmer's market starts on the fourteenth. The great thing is is that, you know, we have convened our community engagement commission and they are very excited to be taking turns to attend the the farmer's market on every Saturday during the summer. And you'll see behind Lieutenant Morgan over there, Lieutenant Morgan, raise your hand. We're going to add add our huge Post-it note board to the farmer's market and hopefully the whoever's there from the Community Engagement Commission will be able to use that and get some feedback. We'll hopefully have a question of the day or whatnot just to try to, you know, increase that feedback from our from our community. That we will also have trailhead info when available for the for the public to look at and we do have an open house coming up and Jen will talk about that in the city administrator's report. So something really fun that's going on and very exciting for the community. I didn't think I would be speaking about it this bad this soon. And I'm not going to get into a whole lot of detail because a little bit of it's a little bit of a dream for me if it could come true, but I got a phone call from Senator Mike Patton's office several weeks ago and the Army National Guard wanted to meet with us. So myself, Jen Camp, our interim city administrator, Lisa Key, our director of planning and engineering, and I and Senator Patton met with Major and Lieutenant Colonel from the Army National Guard. So the there's thirty-two acres along I ninety between George Gee and where the bridge is going to go in and that land is owned by the Department of National Resources. And they've been sitting on it for, I don't even know how long. So the Army National Guard would like to do a land swap with them and put in a guard facility there. And until I met with these people, I didn't really have any idea what some of the things that that could bring to our community. I'm going to leave some of it out because it's not guaranteed, but they would be putting in a full-size track. Possibly some meeting rooms, things like that, which would some of that would be accessible to the public. So we are having a follow-up meeting with them on the twelfth, so next week. And we have also engaged Superintendent Ben Small from Central Valley because they're they're partners and, you know, there's a middle school down the street that doesn't have a track. We've engaged Chief Soto from the Fire Department, Chief Simmons will be there. And Phil from the Hub is sending one of his board members because he will be out of town. So what we're trying to do is to show as much support as we can for this project and what it could do for Liberty Lake. And when the major and I were emailing, he says, "Oh, it'd be great if we could get a letter of support from the council so we can take that when we start talking to DNR about this land swap." That, you know, we know the community is behind it. I said, you know, I'm, I can't speak for the council, but I just how I know though, I think they'll be really behind this. So I would just, I would, but my hesitation was I didn't know if you wanted that to come out in a public meeting yet. And he said, "Sure, go for it." So here I am. So I'm just kind of asking for, you know, kind of a head nod, show of hands. If you would like me to bring that letter back at the next meeting, so you guys can sign it and support, I will relay the little bit of feedback tonight when we meet with them because we won't have another meeting until after we meet with them. But if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy, happy to to mention it, to answer them. They're interested in doing this land swap, A, partly because of the location Liberty Lake. They are very excited about when Lisa started talking about Cataldo coming farther east and then hooking up to Mission and that that's going to be built to handle low-boy trucks and whatnot. And so will the roundabout at the north side of the Kramer Bridge. They were, their eyes lit up and I'm lighting up on community space and they're all excited about the roads. So I'm glad we're all going to be happy. But, you know, if there's no objections or anything, I will go ahead and bring that letter back at the next meeting and just and just relay the support when I meet with them next week and just let them know that it's coming. Question, go ahead, councilmember Norman.
When you said kind of hinted with some amenities, I know that Air National Guard brings a plethora of things all open to the public.
Yeah.
And I'm going to hint along the lines of possibly swimming pool.
So. Yeah, there's all kinds of things in my head. I just don't want, because what I don't want people to do is have these expectations and have them not come true. I like to, you know, make sure I kind of hold some of that stuff back, but I honestly did. I felt when we left that meeting that they, it was we're the Army National Guard and we're here to solve all your problems. So let's hope that's true and that this moves ahead. So thank you guys. Appreciate that. And yes, sir. And it and it won't involve tanks. They did say that all the vehicles will be wheeled, which is kind of dark, but anyway. Okay, city administrator recruiting update. As of Friday, we had ten applicants. Three strong ones, two maybes, and I assume the rest kind of just kind of went in the other file. They were expecting a couple more over the weekend. I do know that they have been reaching out with those people that they're moving forward to the next piece of the interview. They've already reached out to at least one of them. So over the next week or two, they will be doing those initial phone calls, Zoom-type meetings, and then then it gets turned over to us and we will go through that process and we'll discuss when you what you guys want that to look like, how we can, you know, make it interactive. We'll still want the other staff to be involved and citizens and some of our partners, but we can work on that together and looking forward to getting through that process and having a city administrator start. So good news there. And I did have an interview with the Spokane Transit Authority's consultants. They are working on their twenty twenty-five year plan. So it was quite the interesting process. You know, we're a little bit different out here in Liberty Lake with regards to transit and we don't rely on it like some parts of town do, but they were talking, you know, twenty, thirty years in the future. So we kind of got some creative juices going and they'll be interviewing several other people from some of the all of our other jurisdictions and as well as, you know, how can we start working with Cootney County? Because there are a lot of people go back and forth across the border. So and I know, Tom, you've been hearing that on the S on the SRTC as well. So we'll keep everybody posted on that. Jen Camp and I went to a great lunch event today from Washington Policy Center Legislative Update Lunch. So a lot of it, you know, I knew, but there actually because I go to a lot of legislative updates during during the the session, but there were some things that they talked about today that I was not aware of, especially the agriculture bill that went through with regards to overtime and whatnot. So it was very interesting to hear perspectives on items that really don't affect us here. So it was so great, a great lunch. And Monday, Jen and I have the floor at the Valley Chamber Government Action Committee meeting to give a thirty-minute update on Liberty Lake. So again, great partners and so we'll keep getting the good word out about what's going on here. That's plenty for me today. City administrator report.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, we're going to kick it off today with David Williams, our city engineer on some road and construction updates. David?
Hey, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Can you guys all hear me?
We can.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so first, we want to thank everyone for your patience with us as we've been pursuing the construction of so many different projects within within the city of Liberty Lake. So thank you for your patience with some of the traffic control issues along Country Vista. My first project is the slip lane at southbound Liberty Lake Road. We are currently working through the capital cost estimate, which is under review. Once estimate is completed, we'll then reach out to businesses on Liberty Lake. So we're still working through that. I'm sorry, Todd, next slide, please. Okay, just completed that one. Next slide, please. Okay, with this one, the Country Vista Signal Project, the southeast and north paving took place the week of April eighteenth, paving Monday, five nine, the May ninth of southwest corner. So look out for that. The signal poles will be delivered and set by mid-May. The project completion would be mid-June as well. Thank you for your patience with this. We're working through different construction schedules, which is why you'll see the workers out there for a little while, then all of a sudden they disappear for a long time. We're still under construction contract. The contract actually ends in mid-June. Next slide, please. The Kramer Bridge Project, the south side improvements of Country Vista, we're continuing traffic control, our utility crossing excavations taking place right now, which is why we're having the delays on the project and I'm going to talk about that a little bit later. Please watch for the workers. Construction workers do appreciate Liberty Lake residents taking their time through that, through that area. Next slide, please. The Kramer Project, Rehabilitation Project. Today, we're pending council approval. The winning bidder was in a Dagerstrom. The award is on today, May third. Construction begins May ninth. Next project, next slide, please. The Flashing Beacon Project, the three that we've identified as priority are Boone and Stevenson, Country Vista and Sharp and Orchard and Nora. Today, I met with Gil Pierce from Rockwood Property Management, had a great meeting with him. It looks like amongst the residents over there in the metal wood Glen area are, this is a very popular project for them at Country Vista and Sharp. Please look for that. The evaluating process is taking place for costs. The plans are under review. So we are looking at that, all these three different areas very seriously. Next slide, please. Mission Avenue Sidewalk Project between Harvest and Green Brook. The major operations are all being completed. We're just waiting for the curing process to take place of the new paved area. Phil Messick did an amazing job as a project manager for this project and we are glad that it is completed now. Next slide, please. So as I stated before, the the Kramer Bridge Project is having traffic control. As we stated on Facebook and on several social media locations, we are going through a they're excavating right now for a storm drain that needed to be, that needed to be redesigned. So that's why we have two lanes and one lane only available through that area with traffic control. So we appreciate your patience through that area. And right now, the traffic control is lasting from seven AM to five PM. Traffic will drop to one lane for both directions. Again, please watch for the flaggers and take your time for that area. Next slide, please. And last slide here is the roadway closure of Kramer Parkway at Kramer and Country Vista. That project begins on May ninth to late summer twenty twenty-two. And this one, we will be reconstructing the entire roadway. So starting May ninth, that road will be closed. So just be aware of that. Please plan accordingly and thank you again for your time. Next slide, please. If you have any questions about these projects, my direct cell number, you can call me, say hi or yell at me, whatever. You can also send me an email too. We appreciate your feedback. Thank you so much, Liberty Lake.
Any questions for David from the council? Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one question. I haven't heard any. Excuse me, I haven't heard any discussion recently about our Public Works Yard building. Any update on that?
Uh, yeah, actually, shoot, man. Yeah, no worries. Now I'm trying to go back in my thoughts here. I want to say that we are I think the bid was actually awarded. I can, I can actually, you know, council member, let me get back to you with the the details for it. But it is actually under process right now. We have a full plan set and we're working through a lot of the the basic details of that of that job.
Perfect. Thank you.
No worries.
And David, real quick from me, I know I asked you this last time. I don't know if you've, if you had a chance to submit it yet, but the detour plan for that closure at Kramer and Country Vista, is that had been determined yet or still in the works?
Actually, still in the works. We actually were just discussing that today. So it has been sent out to Spokane Valley and the other municipalities. So we are working through that too. I'll get back to you with that as well. I got the information from from us sending out. I should have that information back to you by tomorrow.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Salberg.
And David, on behalf of the River District, for the very first time, we now have kids being able to walk from the west city limits to Selkirk on sidewalks. Thank you very much.
There's a lot of team effort there. So I just want to tell you, thank you for that. Thanks, but there's some great people working in the city who do a great job.
And thank you to the community members whose properties this affected. So.
Yeah.
All right, anybody else? All right, next item, Jen.
Okay, next up, Kyle is going to give us an update on our financials. Kyle?
Thanks, Jen. And so while Todd pulls up our first quarter financial dashboard, it's going to look pretty similar, council, to what you guys see on a monthly basis. You know, regarding the visuals. And so I can kind of start while while that gets loaded. And so from a ten-thousand-foot view, thank you, Todd. So from a ten-thousand-foot view, we like to give the visual of, you know, how the city is doing overall. And so that's the first visual you see there. And the first quarter of the city is performing as expected, a little bit better, I would say. But we are in a pretty massive project year. We have massive projects going on. We have cash flows to manage. And so it it it's all, it does take quite a bit of time to make sure that we were staying cash flow solvent. And so as you can see for year-to-date, year-to-date sales tax, our numbers are looking good. And so we're at one point one five through three months versus one point oh five through last year. And what you'll see is sales tax obviously usually ramps up during the summer months during construction season. So we'll see the bulk of that money coming in as we head through the rest of that year. And so you, a little bit of a, I'll give you an idea for total revenues versus total expenses. It's a little bit misleading in the first quarter. And so what you'll see is total revenues collected is two point oh four million. Expenses through the end of March is four point three. Obviously, we had the cash flow provided to the Kramer Overpass in the amount of one point eight million. And we had two other substantial payments that happen every year. Our insurance premiums come out in the first quarter and also our VBA contributions for our employers come out in the first quarter. And so you'll see a skew every year to a certain extent in the first quarter of expenditures over revenues. And so what we haven't seen, and I'll show you, I'll guide you to the that first bar graph there, property taxes, that one on the left. We've collected twelve thousand of the two point five two five million that we are going to collect. We've collected 12,000 of the 2.525 million that we are going to collect. And so what you'll see, if you review a cash flow statement for the entire year of the city of Liberty Lake, you're going to have two major spikes. You're going to have one in May, you're going to have one in November, and those are both going to be roughly $1 million. And so, so you'll see that those revenues outpace expenses as we get through the year. And so also, when we're looking at some of these expenses that, that we have fronted, like I said before, that 1.828 million for Kramer Overpass, that is going to be a net zero once we do get those reimbursements from lifts. And so, all things considered, you know, taking, taking this as a whole, the city's in a great spot. We're off to a great start in 2022. And as we get through second, third quarter, you'll, you'll see this start to take a little bit more shape. And so with that, we can kind of piece through some of this. So we have utility tax under the revenues there, permits and planning. That lift reimbursement that you see there is from expenses that were incurred last year that we are going to also be able to recoup this year. And so with that, I'll entertain any questions. And so we'll see this, and I'll provide this to the city, to Mayor and Council after every quarter as we, as we go through the year.
Right, thank you. Any questions from the council?
Just.
Sure, Councilmember Cargill.
Thank you. Kyle, I think you said this. I just want to clarify again, the blue bars are for the entirety of the year. Is that accurate?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, thanks, Kyle. I'm going, I need to do a quick diversion here. I did, I totally missed something right after citizen comments. We did have quite a few written comments come in, and we do need to acknowledge those. So Kelsey, I apologize. Thanks for sending that note to me. So if you want to just go through the written comments real quick, and just for this, so everybody knows, we just, we read who it was and what the topic was, and we go on from there. The council has been provided with all of those written comments.
So we received 15 written comments that have all been shared with the mayor and city council. All concerning the book reconsideration on the agenda this evening. Comments came in from Kim, and I apologize if I mispronounce any names, Kim Gerard, Trevor Peck, Stacy Carr, Natalie A. Govan, Tina Merkel Baker, Laura Delagard, Corinne Hotchkiss, M. Willis, Lindsay Willis, Ariel Acker, and Kristy Van Amberg, Dylan McGuire, Ryan Paul, Sean Lorraine Brown, Samantha Paul, and Nathan Paul.
Great, thank you. And again, I apologize for missing that. I need to make a note to myself. So we are going to stay with Kelsey. I asked her to give some great updates on some additional software add-ons to Granicus, which is our meeting management software and many other things that it does. But she's been doing a great job as city clerk, and she's been able to get us up and running on a couple of additional modules. So Kelsey, you're back.
I have to first give credit to Todd because he's been doing a lot of the work behind the scenes to get the software set up. He's been working with Granicus a lot on that. And so I have sent out an email to council and to the mayor to set up, I legislate the program where you can view the agenda. And like I said in my email, it's in beta testing right now. So if you notice anything quirky, wonky, please let me know, give me feedback. But eventually, that will be the platform where we will be able to record motions and votes live during meetings. It'll display on the screen for you guys in the council chambers to see, and we'll be able to relay that over Zoom as well. So that's kind of high level. I don't know if Todd, you might have anything to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions, too.
He's, he's not piping up. He's, he's ready to meeting, like the expert he is in the back. But thanks, thanks for that update on that, Kelsey, and to you and Todd, thanks again for all your efforts and getting, getting the, the additional technology in place so we can make everybody's lives a lot easier in the end.
I guess one other thing I want to mention is that they will be doing some on, they want to do some onsite training with us as we get ready to implement the vote cast, the voting software. And so their first availability for that would be the last week of May or the first week of June. So we can schedule a time either for the council as a whole to do that training, or we can break it up into a couple smaller sessions, whatever the preference is.
Great, thanks. I'm making a note on our future agenda list here. We can tackle that at the end of the meeting. Thank you. So if there's no questions for Kelsey, we will move to library update from Jandy.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I have two quick updates from the library. The first is thanks to a donation from the Friends of the Liberty Lake Library. The library now has MAC passes for families to check out at the library. You can check out a pass for one week, and it's good for two adults and three children to go visit the MAC. It's really good timing right now because they have their DreamWorks exhibit, which has all of the really fun movie artwork. And so that's something that we're going to continue doing each year as long as we have the funding. So we offer that for all patrons, the attend the library, whether they live in Liberty Lake or not. We also do have passes to the Mobius Discovery and Science Center. We have passes from the Friends of the Library for the last couple of years. So you can check those out and go to one of those museums with your family for free. The other update I had is from the ARP funds. If you remember, at the end of last year in 2021, the library board asked for funds from the council to purchase laptops and hotspots for community members that they can check out of the library due to supply chain issues with the hotspots. As of last week, those kits are now available for people to check out from the library. So we have some kits that include a laptop and a hotspot that can be checked out. And then we also just have individual hotspots that members of the community can check out. We're really excited to have that so that we can help our patrons that struggle with connectivity issues. Right, thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the updates. All right, up to events and reminders, Jen.
All right, so Fish and Wildlife let us know that the lake access will be closed May 9th through 17th for some construction projects. Farmers Market opening day is May 14th, and Winter Bear Marathon is the next morning, Sunday, May 15th. Lemonade Day, I believe that's put on by the Spokane Valley Chamber, is May 21st. We're going to have a Trailhead Open House here at City Hall, May 25th, details to come. And the traditional Rotary Memorial Pancake Breakfast and Luminary's. I believe the Luminary's will be probably on Sunday or through the weekend, but the breakfast is on May 30th, and everyone is invited to attend.
Right, thank you. And one more thing I will add, I had, had, Councilmember Cargill held my ear earlier today. For those of you who are Facebook junkies, you may or may not have noticed a viral post on the community page in the last week or so. Somebody asked a simple question about the possibility of a 300, well, there wasn't even a number involved. There was a rumor that there was a large homeless camp facility that was going to be built on the edge of Liberty Lake. It got way out of hand, and as it turns out, our entire community fell victim to a troll. Somebody came on there with very, very truthful sounding information. It started getting a little fishy. I poked around a little bit. And I even had Commissioner Cooney on text that night. Are you sure that I didn't miss anything? I know it's not going in Liberty Lake. Confirmed with, you know, our Director of Engineering and Planning, no. So yeah, the, the post was eventually taken down, but don't believe everything you read. And they even made a website. It was a one pager with no information on it. So I even got, I got a text from one of our officers, well, are you sure? They've even got a website. Yeah, somebody was really bored. So when in doubt, you know, call City Hall. If there's any question of anything that you're asking about, it's a lot, a lot easier to call City Hall. Call me. If you Google my name, my cell phone's like the first thing that comes out. I put it out there. Just check with somebody in a more official capacity so we can get you the information. So we, we learned a really good lesson last week on how quickly things can spin out of control, and it got a little, it got mean. And we don't want to see that in our community. Just rather address it with the facts and go from there. So appreciate everybody. No, I think after a period, people, other people started catching on, but it, it got pretty bad. So no, there is nothing like that coming to here or around, or even next to the high school. All right, we, next we have the Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District. Tom Agnew, you're back up if you're still here.
I am still here. Thank you, Mayor Kaminski. However, I don't have much to report. Jen stole my thunder. I was going to mention the closure of the boat launch. Aside from that, still thinking, great thoughts about the Floral Festival that we might have sometime in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, and just, and Tom, just while you are here, so the, just to remind everybody, the, the date that everybody needs to have their backflow testing done is June 30th, correct?
Yes, thank you very much.
If you have any questions, call, call Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District. For those of you who don't know, they are not part of the city. We go through that a lot, as I'm sure the Sewer and Water District does, too. Spokane Valley Fire, I don't see Chief, so, oh, you, you snuck in. How did I miss you? The tallest one of the whole bunch. So welcome Chief Soto from Spokane Valley Fire Department.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members, and good evening, public. I'll be reporting on this, this month's run stats. I'm also here to put out library fires, so. There we, there we go. All right, I just want people remember who we are. We're family first, all right? I'm a, I'm a citizen of Liberty Lake as well, so let's keep, keep that in mind. All right, Mr. Henderson, next slide, please. All righty, so for April, we had 102 911 calls, which made up for 5.73% of all of our calls. If you notice, the Guardian Center is our largest area of call volume. They make up approximately 30% of our call volume. Next slide, please. Those 91, those 102 911 calls generated 96 actual responses. So that means that there was roughly about six calls that were cancellations, which does occur. Nothing, nothing major here. Next slide, please. This is all I talked to you about a little bit. Here is the top five calls, specifically the first call there. I know it's a little bit small, apologize, but that is false, false calls, followed by sick calls, motor vehicle accidents, breathing problems, and then a fire alarm system activations. Obviously, the number one is false, false calls, and that is a big concern of mine. That is something that I'm working with our prevention group and with some of our stakeholders in order to, what I like to do is facilitate fall bars. So that's when we go in to do smoke alarm blitz. We want to go ahead and do a public home assessment and see if we can if the citizen has called before for falls or appears that they may have an issue where they may fall. What I'd like to do is, is be proactive and start putting some fall bars inside their homes. And that will give them an opportunity to catch themselves and avoid injury in the future. So that's something we're working on now. Next slide, please. To date, we've had 455 calls in Liberty Lake, which makes up 6.2524 percent of our total call volume, with again, the Guardian Center making up roughly 33% of those calls. Of those response, of those incidents, we had 480, I'm sorry, next slide, please. There we go. 448 of those responses covered the 911 calls. So those were actual responses in our area, which is an average of about 113 a month. Next slide, please. And again, just showing our total call lines for the top five calls, again, falls is a big concern to find, and we are addressing that. Fire alarm activations are number two with fall by breathing problems, motor vehicle accidents, and sick calls. Next slide, please. Now I'm going to kind of jump into some significant events and incidents, and I apologize that that is super small, so. So the first thing I want to talk about is at the August, I'm sorry, August, April 25th, Spokane Valley Fire Department Board of Fire Commissioners Meeting. We, our commissioners unanimously, unanimously voted for a multi-year levy lid lift. So I want to make sure that you're aware of that. We're going to put that on the August primary election ballot. Approved by voters, the levy lid lift for the fire district will bring our current dollar and four cent assessed value rate to a dollar fifty, which is the cap. So it'll go to a dollar fifty per thousand of assessed valuation. The last time that we did this was in 2007, so that was 15 years ago. At that time, when we did it, it was at a dollar twenty-three. So we have, we have fallen quite a ways behind that. The first collection for that will be in 2023. It will be for six years, and it will be authorized for 1% growth with, it'll be tied to the CPI, Consumer Price Index, not exceed 6%. Just so you know, over the last 10 years, I'm sorry, since 2018, the assessed value has been rising at 10% per year. So we have not been able to keep up with that. Second thing I want to talk about is May is Wildlife Awareness Month. As you may or may not know, Merrick Kaminski and myself were able to drive around and cover the east end of Liberty Lake, looking at, towards the Idaho border in order to look at the wildlife urban interface. We call it the woo-wee. And what we've, we've done is establish who owns properties and and we are reaching out to them to make sure that they know that they need, they may need to address their areas to make sure that we, if we have a wildlife event, sorry, wildfire event, that we get on top of that and get ahead of it. The last thing I'll talk about is the Recruit Academy. We started a Recruit Academy on May 2nd. So on Monday with 11 cadets, that'll be running through September, so hopefully we'll get all those cadets through. With significant events, we've had two separate motor vehicle accidents that were both same car events. Those were handled without any issue, and we turned them over to Liberty Lake Police Department. We did have a alarm system call out at the Bungalow Building. We did talk to the maintenance person there. We, we have somebody that's been running around pulling fire alarms, and so we are addressing that there with them. The last, last call we had was a hazmat call at the Country Vista Apartments. The the person that was there had a barbecue grill that was too big for the apartment complex. It was not supposed to be there, and it did have a leak. We were able to stop the leak mitigated. And then they were advised that they need to take care of that. At this time, I would like to entertain any questions.
Council, any questions? All right, now see, I do thank you for your, your partnership on, on, well, just about everything. But you know, it was great to be able to drive the east side of Liberty Lake a week or so ago. And you know, I ran into you outside of work, and I actually know one of the owners who owns a large tract of that property, and one of his neighbors who owns another large tract, and they are already partnering with Department of National Resources, and they're starting to clear their, I think it's a total of 30 acres along that edge, should be done mid-June. So we're going to kind of use that as a starting off point to in contact any other residences so they can see how it works, and there's grant money available. So I appreciate you helping point me in the right direction on some of that and for your partnership.
Excellent. And so everybody understands it, the property, the properties looked good. They really did look good. We just want to make sure that that safe space surrounding their properties is, is cleaned up as much as possible. But everyone's properties really did look good, so.
And I learned that fire goes uphill before it goes downhill. So that was a new thing for me. Councilmember Cargill.
Chief, can you tell us where you stand on the Flower Festival idea?
My wife loves tulips, but I'm here for all flowers.
Thank you, appreciate it. We've got to have some fun around here. Okay, Community Engagement Commission, Mark Salberg, are you reporting on that? Thank you for coming.
Look at this, we've been in the Citizen Engagement Commission's been in, well, we've been around for a month. I just want to kind of give you an overview of what we've, what we've been doing. We've had two meetings. Our first meeting was held on 3:30. It was conducted by Mayor Kaminski and Annie. The meeting was mainly a meet and greet for all six members. We had five in attendance. We did meet Terry at the last meeting.
And we've got another one to interview, so.
That's super, super. That's great. So we did, we basically, like I said, it was just basically a meet and greet, finding out, okay, how we're going. So we did, we basically, like I said, it was just basically a meet and greet, finding out, okay, how we're going to move forward, et cetera. There was some interaction, that type of thing. The most important thing that we did was they read their ordinance, ordinance number 277, and we accepted that as our bylaws. Okay, then we had our first real meeting, which was held on 4/20. We will be conducting a meeting every month. It'll be the third Wednesday of every month. Our first project, Trailhead. It was kind of new, only the fact that we were given Trailhead as a project to take over as, you know, getting the community to be more involved with the open house that's coming up on the 25th. Well, with such short notice, we kind of brainstormed and said, well, what can we do outside of the fact that there's going to be social media, it'll be advertised on Facebook, it'll be advertised on the website with the city. They'll have the A-frames out throughout the city and all that. So we thought, well, heck, farmers market is starting on the 14th opportunity. So we're going to have at the farmers market, at least for the first two, that'll be the 14th and the 21st. I'm going to be at the 14th, and what we're going to do, we're going to hopefully have some visuals to let the people know what exactly is going to be happening at the open house. We also are going to have handout reminders, you know, let them know, okay, don't forget, 6 o'clock at City Hall, we are going to have an open house for Trailhead, okay? So that was our first project. Our second project coming up is the, and this is what we need some direction from the city council, the redesign of the city logo. We would definitely love to get involved with that. We were looking at possibly, and this is, you know, again, we want to follow the direction from city council on what direction they want to go with, but we were looking at, you know, possibly putting together a focal focus group. Maybe us as a commission would go out and survey, you know, either on social media or the old-fashioned way, knock on a door and ask the questions, you know? So, you know, that's something that we have to work out with the council, and you know, we can do that. Finally, yeah, like I said, we are planning to, like I said, we are planning to work very close with the city council, because we as a commission need the city council, we feel the city council need us. And in order for us to work together, we've got to work as a team, and I think you'll see, if you want to come to one of our meetings, the day after yours here, and we meet here, you'll find out we've got a very energetic group. The dialogue at our last meeting was unbelievable, and I think we got a good start, so.
Well, I have to report. Any questions for?
Do you have any questions for me?
Mayor Protem?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, we are looking into the flower project.
Just some friendly feedback for your committee. I hear social media, I hear Facebook, I hear website. I am as anti-Facebook as you could probably get. And I know a lot of people, I don't want to speak for them, but I have, my assumption is there's several that feel the same way. So I would like to see the committee not hang their hat on that source only.
If I can make a comment on that, I was only speaking of Trailhead. That was the only avenue that we had to work on for right now, because of the short, you know. After that, yes, we are going to other avenues, definitely.
Yeah, and so David Gainer, our communication specialist, who is now in his fourth week with us, and doing a super job. He is the staff liaison to the committee, and he brings a lot of expertise in that, and they are going to be looking at different avenues to both get information out and get back, so we'll see more on that. Councilmember Cargill.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things, Mark, and just for everyone as well. I really think it would be advantageous if we did more than one open house for Trailhead. And the reason for that, obviously, is because the week that we're doing it is the week of Memorial Day weekend coming up, and I just fear that a lot of people perhaps maybe took some time off that week or are going to be tuned out that week. So if it's possible, I would strongly suggest that we do another one, maybe the following week, or maybe sooner than that. The other item I was going to mention on the city logo, and something that the planning, or excuse me, the Community Engagement Commission could do is start a contest to redesign it, a community contest, to see what we come up with, and maybe we'll get, you know, maybe we'll get lucky, and somebody will submit something that we just all think is unbelievable, and that will be a lower cost to the city than hiring a firm to redo it. So just a thought, thank you.
Great, thank you. Mayor Protem, one more thing.
One follow-up on the logo, thank you for bringing that back up. I guess, when this came up at our last meeting, the first question that popped into my mind was, is there even a desire to go there? So maybe that should be the first question to be answered.
Yeah, we can put it on, I was planning to put it on the future agenda. We were reaching out for some additional proposals, just so we have all that to bring back to the council.
And that was something that we were going to follow up after your lead, and then we'll follow up, you know, with every direction guys give us.
Super, all right.
I just have one suggestion, that's okay. I love the enthusiasm that the Citizens Engagement Commission is already bringing to the table. One thing that I would suggest, if in budget, is consider direct mail to our citizens. I mean, there's no need to pound pavement. You know, let's work smarter, not harder, when possible, because, you know, we want to respect your time, your volunteers. So I would love to see our communications director, mayor, staff, whoever, to see what avenues we can take, even if it's an email blast, notify me, but let's work smarter, not harder.
At one point in time, we had a mayor's newsletter that went out, but money got tight and it went by the wayside, never came back. So they're looking at all kinds of things, appreciate the input. All right.
That is exactly one of the things I was going to bring up. That mayor's newsletter for the city was not just the mayor's newsletter, it was the city's newsletter, and it really needs to come back. And being the community Facebook person, you're right, you need to go all avenues, because not everybody's on Facebook.
Oh, I agree, totally. I'm not on Facebook, so.
All right, thanks, everybody. So we are moving on to workshop, and we are up to proposed financial policy updates. Kyle.
Thank you, Mayor. And so while Todd pulls up, so I have a two-slide PowerPoint that's going to give kind of the nuts and bolts of the proposed changes for council consideration. And so this, to give a little bit of a history, this is something that I think first came up a little bit unofficially during the budget process last year, but it never really gained any, it never gained enough traction to really get in front of council. And what we have seen, kind of as we go into 2022, is just the proliferation of supply chain issues and availability of materials that the city needs to operate day-to-day. And so with that, I started researching some government information help websites, other cities' policies that they use, and it came to this, and I'll highlight some of the major changes for council consideration here, to hopefully alleviate some of that burden or some of the issues that we've seen crop up recently regarding purchases. So I'll give you the overview here, and then I'll have Todd transition to the redline version, so we can kind of go through that as well. And so we'll start with the, so it's Section 1610, page 38 in the financial policies, and it specifically deals with purchases of all kinds. And so we'll start with our current, our current policy is for any purchases above $1,000. So department directors, mayor, they need to get three formal quotes written, and those need to be entered into our accounting software, and then the city administrator or mayor needs to be notified that that is there for their review and approval. And so once they approve it administratively, the finance team will go in and approve that, and then that director, mayor, whoever it may be, can then proceed with that purchase. And so as you can see, the time it just took me to tell you is some of the issues that we're running into with procurement. And so sometimes that process can take four or five days, and that's an anomaly, but that's, you know, that's some of the issues that we're faced with. And so once we get those into the system, by the time it's approved to then go out and actually make the purchase, it's no longer available. And so with this policy, we're requesting the removal of the purchase order policy altogether. And what we'd like to do is mirror what the RCW states, just for ease of access, kind of streamline the purchase process, and also kind of give back some equity to some departments that are potentially unfairly represented in the financial policies right now. And so right now, there is a, there's a limit of $1,000 for the finance director, chief of police, library director, maintenance and operations director, planning director has a limit of $500. And so I would like to see that, I would like to see equitability kind of across all departments for council consideration. And then also, what I'd like to do is propose that, so in line with RCWs and what I've seen a lot of other policies around the state, mirror is RCWs where purchases up to $7,500 be approved by the mayor or department directors without the formal bidding process. That does not mean that they just go out and go get the first quote that they see. It is incumbent upon directors to strive to obtain the lowest practicable price. And so with that, it does give additional flexibility to department heads, city administrator, mayor, to go pull the trigger on some of these day-to-day items when we do see an advantageous price without, A, getting three formal quotes and going through that process to get that approval, or B, putting it on an agenda and getting that council approval, and then hoping that item is still there after the council. And so kind of moving along from that, so purchases of greater than $7,500 but not more than $15,000 shall require city council approval. And so if, and as you all are aware, purchases of above $5,000 today do require council approval. And so we're moving, we're shifting that a little bit from the 5,000 to the 7,500, but not more than $15,000 shall require city council approval. And one of the following, so the three written quotes that I had mentioned before. And so something that is important to include in here is the inclusion of a pre-approved state or national master contract list that has already met the requirements of competitive bidding. And so, for example, you have national contracts such as Omnia, I want to say NASCO. You have state contracts that are pre-approved through the Department of Enterprise Services. And so inclusion on those state or national lists indicate they have already met the requirements for competitive bidding. And so that is another mechanism the city can use to ensure that we are getting the lowest price for a good or service. And then if that's, if they're not on that list, and then we are going to go full-fledged, you know, completion of competitive bid. And so that kind of leads into subsection D here, purchases of greater than $15,000 shall require the city council approval in addition to, as stated before, inclusion in those pre-approved state or national contracts for the completion of that competitive bid. And so as we'll get through, I'll show you the matrix that we already have, just updating it here in a second, but we'll update those public works, contracts, thresholds to mirror RCW as well. So next slide, please, Tom. And so what, so just to make sure that we are encompassing all purchases and contracts, will also include, you know, architectural and engineering services and professional service contracts to mirror what the current RCW states. And so we're just reflecting that, so contracts up to 7,500 shall be approved by mayor or department directors, or be contracts greater than 7,500 will require council approval. And so another one that I've seen in a lot of the policies that are reviewed and recommended in, and some of the items that I've read through as well, is including language that does allow our financial policy to update as RCWs are updated without further council action. And so as RCWs are updated, our financial policy is automatically updated to mirror that as well. And so Todd, if you can transition, I'm not sure how easy that's going to be, to the redline version, I can kind of retake you through that process, and you can see how that lays out in our financial policy. And, oh, perfect, thank you, Tom. So before I start, are there any questions? Is there any?
Councilmember Van Orman.
Kyle, one thing I do see in the financial policies as I was going through them, and having been there to write them to begin with, I'm seeing a lot of it being kind of taking out the city council, which this is our job. We need a finance committee, and we haven't had one, it looks like, for quite a while, of at least three council members to purview these before it actually comes to the greater city council. It's great to go ahead and have, you know, staff approve, but that's what our job is, is to look out for city funds.
And just for a little history, so we had our finance committee, and when we went to having a 6 o'clock workshop instead, that was because the council didn't feel like enough people were getting the full information. They were relying on these three people, and then when it was coming for vote or discussion, they were having to go through the information all over again, so that's why we added this possible 6 o'clock workshop and took off, you know, we took off the three different committees, public safety, community development, and finance, so that the entire board could be present at those conversations and not just three. Just so everybody's got this straight, you know, most people hadn't been through that. Councilmember Baird.
So Kyle, I appreciate the work in updating financial policies. I think it's something that has needed to happen. When I think about financial policies, though, two words come to mind, transparency and accountability. And I have a couple of concerns in the proposed changes. The first concern I have is for purchases up to 7,500, as mentioned. The reason I have a concern there is because we're taking away the formal written quote, and we're relying on staff to assure us they did look for the lowest price. There's no oversight, where's the proof that they found the lowest price? I want to see that documented. I'm okay if we forego a lengthy process in uploading it, but something would need to be submitted, in my opinion, to council, showing that due diligence was done. Another concern I have is just a blanket following of RCW without council approval. The council has the job, the purview, of being more restrictive than RCW allows. So to just blanket statement, we're just going to do what RCW does, takes away the power of city council. I would propose that any changes that are, you know, in line with RCW still come before council to either approve, modify, or deny. Otherwise, what's the point of a city council? Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Cargill.
Thank you, Mayor. Kyle, did I misunderstand when you said the $7,500 number was a number similar to what other cities have?
Yes, so it's, so that is required by RCW, the 7,500 and above is required for the three written quotes. And so it's code cities of less than 20,000.
Do you know off the top of your head how many have that 7,500 number?
I don't know. I can certainly find out. Of the ones- I don't know. It um I I can certainly find out. Uh of the ones that I reviewed, there were three.
And are there any that, I I mean, obviously, we had it much lower, but are there any that are between what we had it at and the seventy-five hundred?
Yes, yeah, so um so obviously, cities that are much smaller that I was able to get uh grab theirs. They have a lower threshold, obviously, because they have a lower annual budget. Um and so, you'll see it anywhere from, you know, a thousand like we have now. Uh and they're staggered. And so, you'll see one that's, you know, anything, you know, above two thousand, anything above. Uh a lot of them are five thousand. And so, um so, yeah, and so you'll see a lot of. Uh to to your point, uh uh council member Van Orman and council member Bear's point, uh city council. Taking the reins on what they want to see this financial policy look like.
Thank you.
Let's get around to other people real quick.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh yeah, I just want to echo what Jamie was saying, uh thinking the exact same thing. Uh I just. It doesn't need to be cumbersome. I just want to be aware of when there's a state change, RCW change. Within our own documents that there. Um and then, yeah, that was my question too, was where did you come up with the seventy-five hundred, fifteen thousand? So. Thank you for explaining that. And then I'm assuming we're not going to take any action on this next workshop. So, can you forward me your slides, please?
Absolutely, yeah.
Great, um before we move on for a second round, council member Kurtz, anything? Council member Salberg?
Uh I I do have a real quick clarification, Kyle, for for my sake. So, can you clarify what cons- so, you were talking about three. You know, formal written quotes. What do you envision an informal written quote to look like? So are you saying we would still get it in writing, but it might be in an email from the vendor? What does that look like?
So informal quotes, and they say actually, RCW states informal quotes can be over the phone, they can be email. Um it's not something where you are getting a a formal piece of paper stating this quote, this estimate from this vendor.
Okay, well, yeah, I would say something over the phone without an email follow-up con- confirmation is probably out. Uh we would want something written, at least from from my standpoint, whether it's, you know, a a formal proposal document. Um may not be necessarily, but yeah, I I don't, I wouldn't go for um somebody giving us a number over the phone and then having it stick, right? Um especially in today's climate. Um I thought when I got out of contract manufacturing for electronics five years ago. That I would never have to deal with a part shortage again while we're all dealing with it. So, things change quick. Now, council member Baird, you had a follow-up?
I I did just want to bring up one additional point, and um I have to disagree with council member Van Orman. I feel that committees are usually the death knell of progress. And it's imperative that every single city council member is a hundred percent aware of. Every financial policy and decision being undertaken by city council. I don't care if it requires a two-hour workshop, a five-hour workshop, God forbid, or whatever. But it's imperative that every council member is fully informed so they can do their job.
Good. Any other comments, questions? So, Kyle, it sounds like we've got some information for you to bring back to us and we'll um. Look at the calendar and see when we can bring this back.
That sounds fantastic. I really appreciate the feedback and and maybe what, what I might solicit between now and the next council meeting is some. Maybe some ideas uh the council have to um. A- and if 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 it's the will of council to not change anything, that is absolutely fine. And so, but um. But some ideas to to try to alleviate some of the burden that city staff is facing uh with um. Trying to procure this day-to-day items.
Thank you, pre- appreciate it. Um so I made a note, we'll take a look at the future agendas. So, don't go away because um. Our next workshop is American Rescue Plan Act dollars um slash City Hall Expansion. So I know, Kyle, you've got part of it. And I think council member Cargill had asked part of the question about City Hall Expansion, so we'll let Kyle lead off if that's okay.
Thanks again, Mayor. So while Todd gets that pulled up, um I I liked it and we've, I think everybody has seen this first slide that's about to come up. But I do like to kind of get back to the start and and provide a little bit of history from the moment that we accepted these funds. What funds have already been expended on what? And um and ultimately, this is council's um. Wheelhouse. And so, what city staff can do is provide recommendations and maybe something that they need. Uh community stakeholders can certainly have their input on, we we need uh as. Uh Mark's obvious stated, you know, how beneficial was that city council allowed um. Funding for those nonprofits uh that that came in. And so, um and I can share my screen. Todd, uh do you have that coming?
He's working on it.
Okay, fantastic. Thanks, Todd. And so, um we can um.
There it is.
Okay, thank you. Go through the history of that. And so, what council did back in July, and so we received these funds last June. And so, uh the July sixth, twenty-one council meeting, uh twenty-twenty-one council meeting. City council identified these following five priorities, the nonprofits, businesses, residents, technology, public facilities and infrastructure. And so, the the main, the impetus behind these funds was, you know, mitigation of COVID nineteen and and how we can. Uh replace um public and private uh lost revenue. And so, um I'll just kind of list these off. So obviously, Liberty Lake has continued to purchase PPE, just as any other entity has to mitigate the spread of COVID nineteen in our community. Uh and so, we did award, so thirteen local nonprofits got a total of uh just south two hundred and seventy thousand dollars to address the negative economic impacts of the pandemic. We were able to install upgraded HVAC equipment uh throughout City Hall. Um and so, uh one of the latest ones is, so I just admitted the project expenditure reports back in April. Uh for those NEUs. And so, what, and so in any use of the city, under fifty thousand. Um and that is how US Treasury defines reporting requirements. And so, um as we had brought up. In the last ARPA update, the um US Treasury's final rule uh included. The language for standard allowance for revenue loss, whether you have revenue loss or not. And so, city council voted to accept that standard allowance uh of up to our entire award amount to use towards. General government expenditures in addition, obviously, to those other previous identified uses. So, next slide, please start. So here's our balance sheet to date for ARPA funds. And so, we have received that first tranche back last June. And so, here are some of the expenses uh to date. So, supplies PPE, that's fairly self-explanatory. We did have a couple of um mobile vaccine clinics. Uh we did procure some IT services through Executech for Office three sixty-five migration to, you know. Uh better adapt to hybrid work environment. And obviously, the grants there that you see. Uh are those nonprofit grants. And we did have some capital expenses. The the major one was the HVAC upgrade. Uh we also had some mobile um reader boards that serve a variety of purposes. Uh give latest um COVID nineteen information or any um street traffic updates, obviously, as well. So, so you can see those total expenses. So, we have spent to date four hundred and seventy-seven thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars. Our current balance in the ARPA fund is just over one million. We'll get another one point five in June. And so, that bottom number there is the funds that we have available for ARPA expenditures um for our entire award. Uh now, so next slide, please stop. So this is a smorgasbord of requests for council consideration. And so, we will chew through these, um I'm sure, uh over the next few meetings. As council develops, you know, what 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 they want to prioritize for for expenses. But this is just kind of a snapshot of what I have received to date. And what I know that council uh has been considering. Obviously, the first one uh that was kind of attached to this um workshop. Was the potential for City Hall expansion. We will need to go through um some planning to identify what that cost is going to look like. So, um I know that Liberty Lake Water Sewer District is um, they're going through some pretty major cybersecurity upgrades. And so, I did talk to Bijay a couple of months ago about um what what their need might look like. And so, um I will follow up with them to get a a firm number for what they're looking for, because I think their total was something in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifteen thousand. And so, obviously, you know, as council develops priorities, you know, we're we're going to spread this out as much as we can. And so. Uh Vista, kind of along the same lines as uh we we've brought this up before. Uh how can we kind of assist tho- those businesses that may be in need? And so, my last check-in with Melanie from Avista was roughly eighteen thousand dollars uh for um. Uh businesses that may be behind on utility payments. And so, we can certainly look into that as potential priority. Uh and so, uh uh recreating that uh twenty-twenty. Um nonprofit revenue loss grant uh application process. Uh if council so chooses, uh we can kind of recreate that and 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 see what kind of loss. Uh local Liberty Lake nonprofits experienced in twenty-twone, twenty-twenty-one as well. Uh and so, in in talking with Chief Simmons, you know, his most pressing thing is uh fleet rotation. And and so. Um he i- if he would like, uh he has a. Uh a quick PowerPoint to better articulate his D for the five vehicles. And and if he would like, we can tack that on to the end of my report here. But I'll move on. Uh so, we had a, we have a slew of requests from, you know, golf operations and our our parks and maintenance side. So golf operations, you know, equipment and supplies, as you can see there, street operations, major capital purchases. And as you'll recall, so once we took that standard allowance, it it broadened the scope of allowable purchases. Immeasurably. And so, all of these things are eligible. Again, I'm going to reiterate, this is council's bus. And so, um whatever you guys decide on uh as your priorities. Um i- is obviously what's what we're going to proceed with. And so, you can see street operations and and quick arithmetic is, you know, our funds would be dried up in no time. If we spent, you know, the entire amount for for our major uh street capital purchases. Parks, new drinking fountains, trash receptacles, Liberty Lake Library. So Jandy had a um. A well-put-together itemized list of the things that that would really improve their facility uh over there. And then the last piece was kind of born out of the Trailhead Project, and it is an opportunity for council consideration. So, we have a water line that's, I I don't want to miss, but it's it's aging. And it uh it does service the Trailhead Facility. There was no intent to replace that water line. During the Trailhead Project. There is opportunity for pretty major cost savings while we're ripping up that pavement. Uh over at the parking lot to replace that water line. And so, that's another one that um. Uh that we wanted to get in front of council just for their consideration, and that's just a pure ballpark. Uh figure uh of what that might cost. And so, um I'm I'm sure we'll get additional requests. This is what I have. Um council, uh if you would like, um. Please identify, you know, anything that I did not mention here, and then we can obviously go from there, so.
So, so if we could, um maybe let Chief Simmons go real quick on the cars. And then, when he's finished, Todd, if we can bring Kyle's list back up. I thought maybe we go around and just maybe hit each one, um see if the council, which ones the council want to, wants to come back. Um for with further information. But I'll go ahead, chief, when you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Started here in a second. So I'm about to say this really nasty term that we've heard a couple of times today, supply chain issues. Um seems to be a theme these days.
Can you get closer to the mic, chief?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so used to walking around when I talk, so.
Well, you can, you can, you can take it off the standard walk.
Okay, I'll leave it. I'll break it. All right. All right. So, to supply chain issues are forcing law enforcement, especially law enforcement leaders around the country. To really long-term plan for their purchases, um especially with vehicles. At this juncture, police vehicles are difficult or almost impossible to find. As a matter of fact, I read an article from an East Coast uh agency who was just forced to buy two thousand and eleven Crown Victoria's because they couldn't find any other vehicles. Um so, research of um the police fleet management literature and news stories, as I just said, covering uh. The difficulties in managing police fleets reveals that uh vehicles purchased from some manufacturers in twenty-twenty-three, so next year. Will arrive in twenty-twenty-five. So, we're facing a little bit of a um. A hard time coming up. Um and as you know, vehicles are essential for public safety. Uh, did you get that? I'm sorry, Todd. You want to transition that? Sorry, what's that? Um on the Washington State Contract Vehicle website, uh for a while, purchasers, uh we've seen that um the actual. Uh ability to order vehicles were closed at the beginning of twenty-twenty-two. Um there's been some uh rumors that uh some manufacturers are going to open um. You know, the ability to order again, but only for a short time, a month or two. But I don't think we've seen it. I don't know, have you been on lately and seen it? I haven't seen it yet. So, the the you're pretty much stuck with what's on the lot um and trying to find um. Uh companies and dealers with vehicles on the lot is extremely difficult, especially here in Washington right now. Um furthermore, we're not just dealing with our vehicles, we're dealing with the emergency equipment. For example, we purchased uh the two chargers that the council approved uh back in the winter. Uh we, those arrived, I believe, in February. We turned those in, and they're still not equipped. And there's no telling when the lights. Um and the other uh emergency equipment that goes into those vehicles will arrive, so we can equip those. We're probably looking at the end of the summer. Is what I'm estimating now from our uh chat with them today. Next slide, Todd. So while the purchase is necessary, well, we have a a aging and ailing fleet. Um right now, we have four vehicles that are over a hundred thousand miles, and they're seven and nine years old. And we have one vehicle that is at seventy-seven thousand miles and is twelve years old. And that parti- particular vehicle is, we're starting to accumulate some cost repairing that and keeping that up. Um so that it's it's good to go for us uh to use. Um next slide, Todd. The recom- uh recommended replacement um from fleet management. Uh experts is eighty to a hundred thousand miles, and the national average is a hundred thousand miles. And I can tell you from my experience, because. Uh this shortage is nothing new. This has been been going on for a while, and I've seen um cars in our county. And I've driven cars in our county between here and this and the and the in the Spokane County Sheriff's Office with almost two hundred thousand miles. And you're you're talking about a lot of maintenance, a lot of money goes into keeping those those vehicles on the road. So. What we're trying to do is is avoid um that continuing ongoing maintenance and those costs. Next slide, Todd. Now, with the growth in our population and businesses, and our business community will come the need for the growth in public safety in our department. Um this means adding additional officers. Adding additional officers means purchasing purchasing additional equipment such as vehicles. Uh and planning and staying ahead of this anticipated growth is best for our agency and our community. Next, next uh slide, Todd. So, the objective of my request is uh is to replace uh five of our our vehicles, those aging and ailing vehicles. That are are starting to, we're starting again to start, starting to see that increase in maintenance and the maintenance cost of those vehicles. Using um our ARP funds. Next slide, Todd. So what's expected, the expected impact of these purchases, again, replacing those vehicles so that we're able um. To do our job. I mean, it's it's hard to do our job without without uh the equipment to do so. Next slide, Todd. And we want to do so as soon as possible. Uh one of the things that I didn't mention here is um our fleet. Uh we're kind of short numbered in our fleet as well. Council member, council member uh Salberg will tell you, it only takes one critical incident. And a game of bumper cars with a dangerous suspect to put three or four vehicles out of uh out of the rotation. If that happens, which we see happen a lot in this county, I've been part of it, um even with uh Liberty Lake before I worked here. Um then it's going to be really difficult for us to start to rotate cars and do those things and and get people out on the street and to the the department. Uh next slide, Todd. So, we're asking for up to three hundred thousand dollars to purchase five vehicles and equip those vehicles. Next slide, Todd. I think that's it. And I can answer any questions if there are.
Thanks, chief. Any questions for chief? Uh council member Cargill, then council member Van Orman.
Okay, thank you. Uh chief, if if uh the supply lines are so backed up and we're not going to get these until twenty-twenty-five or maybe even later than that. Um, does that change your budget number? Um and? And does that also change the, the need on those vehicles that you had up, I think, on slide two or three on replacing those if, if we're not going to get these in, you know, three or four years?
So right now, we have two vehicles that particularly dealer on the state bid, the website is holding for us. He doesn't know how long he can hold those. I believe he had nine vehicles to begin with before these two vehicles arrived. Those vehicles went quick. He held those as, as, as long as he could. Again, we just got word that, that there will be some openings for ordering and we hope that that the wait won't be that long. But if we order now in twenty twenty two, hopefully we'll get them before twenty twenty five. My fear is if we wait until the next budget year, it's going to be an extended amount of time before we, we can purchase those. So if we can find those now, and Darren Lieutenant Morgan does a great job communicating with some of those entities. I think we can get maybe two, maybe all of them, especially if we look at some alternative vehicles. There's some, some vehicles like trucks that are pursuit rated, special purpose vehicles that are available because not a lot of agencies use those. They would be perfect for us, especially with the size of some of our officers, like Officer Merrick, who's two of me. And barely fits into an Officer Howard, Edge Trooper Howard, who's me and a half. And so vehicles like that would, would work great for us and also would be great for the community as well.
Can I ask one follow up? So what happens to the, the vehicles that you're replacing?
Yeah, so.
I would assume because used car sales are, I mean, are just outrageous right now, we could get a little bit for those.
There are, I know, without giving it away right now, I know the Central Valley School District Security Staff is in need of some vehicles. So that's one of the things that we've talked to ex-chief Astmas about, Security Director Astmas. And also, again, we are one critical incident away from playing bumper cars with a suspect. And if those vehicles are taken out of rotation and they have to go get repaired, we're going to need some vehicles to replace those for officers to be in. So it's always nice to have, you know, four or five, six extra vehicles around, just in case you do have an incident where you lose vehicles, and I've seen it numerous times in my career where you lose four or five, six vehicles in an incident, so.
Right. What, Councilmember Van Orman, you're next.
Chief, thank you for getting out in front of it. Because it's really important, especially with everything that's going on. I guess the question I have is, granted, we've got a few years before Washington State says that we're supposed to go all electric. How's that going to affect the department?
So emergency vehicles are, yeah, they're exempt from that. So that, that doesn't apply to us. I actually went over and met with Tesla in regards to their progress on emergency vehicles and any other potential builders or suppliers of emergency vehicles that are electric, and there's none right now. The closest that you're going to get is the Tesla truck, which by the way is bulletproof for small arms. I know the city of Dubai overseas bought about a hundred of them to try them out, but they're still not emergency vehicles. They're not pursuit rated, et cetera. So hopefully that technology will, will come soon. But right now, I know as far as that new law, emergency vehicles are exempt.
Good to hear.
Next question, let me try everybody else first, anybody? Councilmember Salberg.
Thank you, Chief. And I came back and gave the council just a heads up. At the time that, that I was with you a month ago, we're two vehicles short for the staff that we have current. So we're already behind. And yes, I've been in pursuit crashes and yes, we can take out a lot of cars at one time. There are going to be pursuits just to take out cars. That's to keep us safe. The other part of this that isn't included, I think five is a, is a a good target number. But it is not going to be, you're not going to have five or six. You heard him say this at the end, you're not going to have five or six cars sitting around. At this point, we'd be lucky in two years to have one extra car. And that's if we, if we approve this. And that's not talking about what we're going to talk about in October, and that's at least another couple of officers, so.
Great, thanks. Anybody else before I go back to Councilmember Cargill?
I'm, I'm.
Oh, you're good, okay. Question from me, Chief. So obviously you said, you know, we would keep some of those other cars kind of in the background, just in case. The ones that you don't keep, can the electronics in those be transferred to the new cars?
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
So that might help get a couple of them going at a time. So, so on this particular item, are there any objection from the council to bringing this back as an action item at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Did you want to expand or no?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely. We've got to our ERP discussion, you said you're going to.
Well, 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 so this, this is part of the, part of the ERP.
I don't think any of these funds should be used for general expenses at all. I think we have revenue sources within our budget currently. If we would need some more police cars, that's fine, we have other funds for it. I don't think the ARP fund should be used for operational expenses. I think the ARP funds, it's a chunk of dough. It's two million five hundred eighty three thousand dollars. And I, again, I don't want to see us use it on operational expenses when our, our revenue sources are going to increase as our citizens increase, as our businesses increase. We need to be thinking about how best to use those funds with a home run approach that affects everybody within the city. I know we need police cars. I, I know Mark wants money for the winter glow and got no problems with any of that, but I don't think it should come from these funds.
Go ahead, Councilmember Kurtz.
I agree with Mayor Proton, but I'm Kennedy, not that I'm opposed to, whoa. Mayor Proton, oh, you're, apologize for that, goodness. Forgot where I was there. So everybody's saying about using the operational funds to pay for that. And if we need to do a supplemental to our budget, I'm happy to entertain that as well and bring that back. Chief is saying about the need for the cars and I, and I want public safety to be one of our priorities. I think one of the concerns that I have about just kind of voting right now for what we want is I would rather do what we did for our capital facilities plan where we have the chance to just sit and evaluate those and come back with a grid and everybody's vote. If that makes sense, that would be my suggestion. I think the other piece of it that is still missing for me is the community. So my mic is gone. What, what I would like to know is what the community wants. And I don't feel that we have, I don't know what the community wants. And, and I feel like we've sort of missed the opportunity or, I mean, other cities have done thought exchange, they've done other ways. It's part of what the Community Engagement Commission was brought about for, so we can have this information coming into us about what the community wants. There are a lot of people sitting here tonight, but I can't ask you any questions. And so I really want to figure out how we can engage the community and other ideas besides council priorities. Because I think ARP dollars are citizen funds. We have a unique opportunity with a lot of money to do something, something that's really not, you know, super fun, like buying tractors or, you know, whatever. But there are other things that we, I mean, tractors are necessary, tractors is not even the right word. But I just really feel like the community, we haven't heard from them yet. Yep. So I really want to focus on that.
Can I, can I re-answer real quick? So I, I think we need to be really careful when we're putting the labels on these things where, where it may say operational when it's really capital. So like when we buy police cars, they're on the capital facilities plan. It's not an ongoing expense like gas, insurance, those kind of things. So to me and probably from an accounting standpoint, Kyle, jump in, and if I'm wrong, I changed my major from accounting for a reason in undergrad. But, but, you know, the police cars, like the HVAC that we already did, those are capital expenses, right? But when we're getting into things, you know, that have a recurring expense, like, you know, software costs, you know, that we're going to have to keep paying for them every year as we go and not replace, you know, the entire thing, those, those are two different things. But I totally understand your points. And we have until the end of twenty twenty four to allocate these and the end of twenty twenty six to spend it. So we want to, you know, it's not necessarily a sprint. We've gotten a good start, we need to make it a marathon. So I understand where you guys are going on that. So, so Councilmember Cargill, if you want to jump in, and Todd, if you can bring that list back up, that'd be great.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to say I agree with what Councilmember Kurtz said, that this, this is not our money. I mean, it's not the city's money, it's the citizens' money. And again, I just, I like doing this, this type of math where we kind of break it down. It's about two hundred and thirty ish dollars per citizen is what it accounts to. So I, I, I agree that I think it's critically important to get the citizens buy in on whatever it is that we do. I'm not necessarily opposed to any of these ideas. In fact, I'd like to see further ideas on here about perhaps some small business other than the, the Vista Utility Assistance, some other small business perhaps tax rebates or something like that, that we could give and help the small businesses that are in Liberty Lake. That would be another idea I would, I would really like to see on this list. In terms of the City Hall expansion, I mean, we saw it in this room tonight. If we have a big issue that's coming up, and I hope everyone will come back for every city council meeting. But if we have a big issue that's coming up, we need more space specifically in this room. We've talked a lot about the Trailhead Facility wanting to have more community space. Here's an opportunity to get us some more community space. Now, will that be a citizen priority? I, I don't know. I, I think what Councilmember Kurtz had to say about perhaps coming up with a grid or a list of maybe ten different projects, I'm just throwing out ideas here, or ten different ideas, and then taking that out to the community and putting it as many places as possible and letting people with a little sticker, you know, say what their top priority would be. And that would at least give us a little bit of idea in terms of what, what the community is looking for. The City Hall expansion piece was something that Councilmember Kennedy brought up that I thought was a good point as well. We've talked about this idea of, of going out onto the patio, trying to expand this room a little bit more, not only for the council, but also in case anybody else wants to use this meeting room as well. And I know with, with the additional staff that we're going to be hiring, we're going to need extra space here at City Hall as well for, for those people. I don't want to make it so that everybody's sitting on top of each other, which I'm sure the city employees appreciate that. Those are just my thoughts.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Bear.
I have to echo what Councilmember Kurtz and Cargill have said, and I'm going to take it a step further. I'm frustrated. I've been on council five months and have asked for the community to be involved with these funds. To date, there's been zero effort to involve the community. Why? That would be my question. I don't necessarily expect an answer, but it's inexcusable. These are taxpayer funds. We got lucky through the federal government to get the money. And I see a laundry list of things to spend them on, some of which I would say absolutely tonight. But that's not my decision. This needs to go to the citizens. Why we're waiting forever to get this before the citizens is beyond me, but that needs to be a top priority. Thank you.
Thank you. I will weigh in real quick. So when I, when I was at the National League of Cities Congressional Conference back in March now, we obviously had a lot of sessions on this. And I was really surprised at how many cities had not done anything with, with the funds. And I don't know if it was necessarily because, you know, they were, the guidance was ever changing and that, that was most of it, it was ever changing. And people, you know, they were confused, what could they do, what couldn't they do? But, you know, thankfully the, the final rule came in and since we received under ten million dollars, we do a little bit more flexibility. But, you know, like I said, it's, this is a marathon, it's not a sprint, so we, we need to do it right. But I will jump back real quick unless anybody else has any more questions on the ARP. Go ahead.
One more question.
Yes, absolutely.
Kyle, do we have this money in an interest-bearing account?
Yes.
And how much are we getting per month in interest? Or how much do you expect that we'll be getting in interest?
So as the Fed kind of releases and increases that interest rate, our local government investment pool will start seeing greater returns. And that is the go-to investment fund from local municipalities in the state. And so currently, the, the rate of return is not great. And so I can certainly provide counsel with figures on that. I expect that amount to grow exponentially as, as the Fed increases interest rates. And usually the LGIP follows the Fed, you know, probably about a month or maybe two months. You, you'll see the Fed increase interest rates and then you'll see LGIP increase their rate of return.
If we've got two point five ish in there, and let's say we decide we're going to go through a process for the next six months or so to figure out what exactly it's going to be spent on. And we get into next year, what, what's that number going to be next year? Is it going to be two point six?
Two point, it could be two point six would be on the high end, I'd say. So I would say maybe, you know, if we could make fifty thousand off of this with some of these increased interest rates, that'd be phenomenal.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, so jumping out of the ARPA discussion, do we still, do we want to bring back Chief's request, even, you know, even if it's not coming out of ARPA? Because it sounds like we did something we need to take action on and make a decision fairly soon with regards to ordering cars. Councilmember Bear.
I would vote that we absolutely need to bring it back, whether or not we use ARP dollars. I would not be in support of for Councilmember or Mayor Proton Foyer's reasoning. We need to prioritize this request, though.
Thank you. Any, any objection to that? Great. Right, so we'll, Kyle, if we can try to get that together for the next meeting. I know we've done the not to exceed before because sometimes when time is of the essence, we, we can't get everything in, in place and that's been successful. All right, okay.
Mayor, just real quickly, so where, I guess my question is, where are we headed on the ARP discussion?
So I would like to put a challenge to, to the Community Engage, yes, I'm looking at you soon. Engagement Commission, maybe, you know, to noodle on it, get some ideas on, on, you know, how to go about it along, you know, obviously along with the rest of the commission. And then the council will continue to work on some ideas for them to get some feedback on. So again, I'm making notes as we get through tonight and on what we need to add to the future agendas, and that's on there too.
So it would come back potentially as another workshop discussion?
Yeah.
And then maybe another month or so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
If, if that, then we'll see what else is up.
Just for a second. I, I don't want to, I don't want to leave tonight thinking that we're, we've just given it off to the, the committee to chew on, it's a coordinated effort.
Right.
So I, I'm absolute, this is a bigger discussion for our council, for the citizens. So the sooner we start that discussion, the better I think we're going to be. So workshops, yeah.
Yep. All right. So we're getting ready to start into general business. If no one's opposed, can we do a quick five minute stand at ease so we can all take a quick break? Any objection? We'll be back in five minutes. We'll be back in five minutes. Here. All right, all right, welcome back. Thanks, everybody, for your patience. Sometimes we just need to stand and stretch and take a little trip down the hall. Okay, so we are two action items. Find the right piece of paper here. Mayor Protem, if you'd like to kick us off.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items 10A, B, and C.
Second. We have a second by council member Van Orman. Do we have any questions, comments? All right, those in favor of approving general business content agenda items A and B, please say aye. Oh, and and C, sorry, on the other side of the page. I'm assuming everybody's still say aye. Anybody opposed? All right, motion passes 6-0.
Okay, general business 11A. Make a motion to approve the contract for Kramer Parkway Rehab with N. A. Degerstrom in the amount of $1,872. And eight, $1,872,384 with a contingency in the amount of $187,238 to be managed by staff. For a total authorization of $2,059,622.
Second. We have a second by council member Baird. Questions, discussions? Councilmember Cargill.
Thank you, and and maybe this question, I'm not sure who this question is to, maybe it's.
David or David, yes.
David, I went through that, the the paperwork on this. Did I miss a completion date?
I don't know if you missed a completion date, but the project for this this portion of the project should be done. I believe it is early 2023. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, 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 sorry. Give me a second.
Summer of this year.
Yeah, summer of this year, yeah, sorry. I'm thinking of the other Kramer job, yes. It's summer of this year.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mayor.
Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm just trying to get there. You know me on page 103 of 195. David, if you can help me understand why they're hitting us for two MOB fees.
I can actually get back to you about that. Their first MOB fee, I believe, is just to get their equipment to that location. I can look into the second MOB.
Yeah, I didn't understand the difference between the two exhibits, but there's 150K on the first MOB and and what was the second one?
Well, if I may, if I may, yeah, so we have two schedules here. There's two parts to this contract, and the contract is the city's contracting for the full boat. But as you might recall, we have a memorandum of understanding with D.R. Horton, and we are billing them for a separate schedule. So there's mobilization for the city and there's mobilization for the water line that's going in Kramer Parkway. We get reimbursed 100% for the water line portion of it. But that's, but we've, but the but the whole schedule is set up with a separate billing for the roadwork versus the water work.
So I guess the reason for my question then is, aren't they going to be onsite?
They split mobilization cost between the two, proportionately between the two pieces of the project.
Oh, I see. So it's a total, but it's two projects, okay.
Yes.
All right, any others? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I have one other question. Just maybe for Kyle. I know we've budgeted for this project, correct?
Yep.
I know that it looks like we've recently got an updated quote or bid, lowest bidder. Just wondering how it relates to what we budgeted.
I can speak to that, Kyle.
Go ahead.
So we have been tracking that. So part of the part of the budget has absolutely been for the design piece of it. And even with the design piece, when we look at the piece that is actually going to be cost recovery from D.R. Horton for the water line. We're actually under, it looks like we're under budget even with the contingency.
Perfect. One last question, if I may. Under on page 103 of 195. It talks about some crush surface, excuse me, item 122, some. Three ace, whatever, it looks like some sub base, because there's compaction right behind it. The reason I'm asking the question, it's $346,500. You know, there was some sacrifice to close that road for heavy equipment weight restrictions. Is is this the end result of those weight restrictions coming in at 346? Because isn't that, isn't that what the whole idea behind the weight restriction was, to salvage some of our base of that road?
It is, but we but obviously we've got to address portions of it. And again, I'm not looking at what you're looking at, Mayor Protem. But a piece of the, so the portion of it where the water line is going in, it's a deep water line. Has we've obviously got to to deal with the base under that piece of it. And that will, that portion is being paid for by D.R. Horton. But if I'm, if I'm understanding your question correctly, I suspect that 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 is associated with that. We do have some repair work. That's why it's a partial reconstruction. But it's not a complete reconstruction because of the weight restrictions that we imposed on there.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to remind everybody that we sacrificed there to not spend so much money now. So thank you.
Thank you. Any of us have any questions? All right, not seeing any. All in favor of approving contract for Kramer Parkway Rehabilitation with N. A. Degerstrom, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes 6-0.
General Business 11B, make a motion to approve the purchase of four Panasonic ToughBooks for the police department in an amount not to exceed $14,000.
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Solberg. Any discussion or questions? Councilmember Cargill.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify on here, and of course, my screen disappeared just as I was called on. The, it says the unit price is $3,195 per. And then it goes into all the other things at the bottom, the warranty for the fourth and fifth year, the smart card, so on and so forth. All of those have a unit price, but they don't have the overall price on the on the right-hand column. I'm not sure if this is a question for for Kyle or or maybe the chief. Is that, are those items included in the $3,195? Are they sep- separate from that and just ones?
I I can, I can decipher it for you real quick, because so if you look at it, those quantities are zero. So it looks like those are included. So your your total, I think they just want to line item, itemize what we are getting, just so it's on the, it's documented properly.
Correct, yeah.
All right, that's what I was trying to clarify, is if if it was included in that, in in that unit price up top. Okay, thank you.
Great. Right, any other questions? All right, not hearing any. All in favor, I lost my page too. All in favor of approving the purchase of four Panasonic ToughBooks for the PD, please say aye.
Aye.
Right, any opposed? Right, motion passes 6-0.
General Business item 11C, make a motion to approve the updated Liberty Lake splash agreement.
Second, a second by council member Baird. All right, any questions? We do, we can bring that up. Councilmember Cargill.
I mean, I'm going to vote against this. I mean, it's a cost of 15,500 for our citizens. But as someone who submits columns to newspapers all the time, it's, it would seem to me that we could still provide this type of information to the splash without having to necessarily pay $15,000. And so I am opposed to this particular agenda item tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, all in favor of approving the updated Liberty Lake splash agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, motion passes 5-1. Sure. I always get burned. It's the one time I don't write it down. All right, next one.
General Business item 11D, make a motion to approve the Foster Garvey Engagement Letter for Trailhead Bond Council Services in the amount not to exceed 35,000.
Second, a second by council member Baird. All right, any questions, discussions? This was a topic at our last meeting where the council. Agreed to move forward with Foster Garvey. Any questions? Nope, all right, not seeing any. All in favor of approving the Foster Garvey Engagement Letter for Trailhead, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes 6-0.
General Business 11E. Just a clarification question on the motion. You want all this in wrapped up in one?
Lisa, all in all in one, correct?
My apologies, I don't understand the question.
Well, there's three, there's three different items in the, in summary. You want it in one motion. Can we address all three items in one motion?
Yeah, so so the conditions, it it, the the decision was premised on three conditions. The conditions are detailed in the in the decision. We're just asking you to ratify the written decision, which is based upon the discussion and the deliberations that council had at the last meeting. So yes, please, one motion. It will, may I just say that I will be coming back at the next, hopefully the next meeting with a development agreement and with an ordinance. But this is just right now, just ratifying the the written decision for this, your findings, conclusions, and decision.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll just roll with it. Make a motion to ratify the findings, conclusions, and decisions for LUA 2021-006. Meadowood Technology Campus Comprehensive Plan Use Map Amendment and Zone Change.
Second.
A second by council member Solberg. Any further questions or clarifications? Not seeing any. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0.
In general business 11F, I'll not be making a motion on this topic.
And we need, does anybody, can I get a motion from someone on F?
I'll make a motion. A move to uphold the Library Board of Trustees' decision on February 15th, 2022, to retain the materials that align with the Liberty Lake Library's collection development policy.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by council member Baird. Okay, so make things.
Madam Mayor. Oh, yes, I want to disclose a potential conflict of interest prior to the discussion. I know the person that brought the information forward, worked with her as a neighbor on our neighbor committees. And our kids play together. We are family friends, but the decision that we're making tonight is about the city, and that will not impact my decision.
Thank you for the disclosure. All right, so. I don't know, obviously, it's going to be a lot of discussion tonight. I'll just make sure I keep track of everybody. Everybody will get one chance before we have, let somebody have a second question. So I saw Tom hand up first.
Yeah.
Councilmember Solberg.
Briefly, thank you. Based on the information that was provided to us for the last couple of months. I have complete trust in the process that the Board of Trustees went through, actually that the library went through to begin with. And then also based on the feedback that we got with our comments. It is my opinion that the citizens of Liberty Lake do want to. Hold the Library Board of Trustees and and not censor materials regardless of their content.
Right, thank you. Next. Councilmember Baird.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize in advance if my comments are a little lengthy. I am quite passionate about this topic, so please bear with me.
Three minutes.
Let me start by saying how I hate that our current culture seems hell-bent on stripping our children of their innocence and naivete while subverting parents who wish to guide topics around sex and gender, identity to fit their personal worldview and their child's emotional and age readiness. Personally, I find the book Gender, Queer, Vile, and Reprehensible. I would never allow a child in my care to view that book or any book containing explicit visual or written descriptions of sexual acts. My point, it's inappropriate for children. However, this book was not found in the children's section of our library. Instead, it's tucked away on a fairly high shelf in the adult biography section. No fanfare from the library staff brought this book into the limelight, nor is it marketed toward children. Instead, it's just merely available for any patron to check out. As someone who is very conservative, I support freedom of speech, which often includes speech I strongly disagree with. And let me be clear, I completely disagree with the speech found in Gender, Queer. Many have argued that this book is pornographic, yet state and federal law frankly disagree with you. RCW 9.68.050 actually defines erotic material as, quote, "printed material, photographs, pictures, motion pictures, sound recordings, and other material, the dominant theme of which, taken as a whole, appeals to the purient interest of minors in sex, which is patently offensive because it affronts contemporary community standards relating to the description or representation of sexual matters or sadomasochistic abuse, and is utterly without redeeming social value." Even if you personally define gender queer as erotic material, RCW 9.68.015 exempts public libraries from prosecution for circulating, quote, "erotic or obscene material," or even having it in their collection. Of course, if you disagree with the law, which has been on the book since 1959, redress it with the legislature. In West Virginia State Board of Education versus Barnett in 1943. Supreme Court Justice Robert Jackson said, quote, "The very purpose of a bill of rights was to withdraw certain subjects from the vicissitudes of political controversy, to place them beyond the reach of majorities and officials and to establish them as legal principles to be applied by the courts. One's right to life, liberty, and property, to free speech, a free press, freedom of worship and assembly, and other fundamental rights may not be submitted to vote. They depend on the outcome of no election." Another Supreme Court Justice, William O. Douglas, had this to say, "Restrictions of three, of free thought and free speech is the most dangerous of all subversions. It is the one un-American act that could most easily defeat us." He also said that the framers of the Constitution knew human nature as well as we do, and they too had to live in dangerous days. They too knew the suffocating influence of orthodoxy and standardized thought. They weighed the compulsions for restrained speech and thought against the abuses of liberty. They chose liberty. And our founding fathers agree. James Madison said, "The power to censor more than any other ought to produce universal alarm because it is leveled against that right of freely examining public characters and measures and of free communication among the people thereon, which has ever been justly deemed the only effectual guardian of every other right." Benjamin Franklin, another founder, said, "Freedom of speech is the principal pillar of a free government. When this support is taken away, the constitution of a free society is dissolved and tyranny is erected on its ruins." Used to be liberals and conservatives could unite and rally around free speech. Now it just seems we seek to cancel each other's viewpoint. You know, President John F. Kennedy once said. You know, President John F. Kennedy once said that if this nation is to be wise as well as strong, if we are to achieve our destiny, then we need more new ideas for more wise men reading more good books and more public libraries. These libraries should be open for all, except the censor. We must know all the facts, hear all the alternatives and listen to all the criticism. He went on to say, "Let us welcome controversial books and controversial authors for the Bill of Rights is the guardian of our security as well as our liberty." Claire Booth Luze, an ardent conservative and famous anti-communist, said, "Censorship like charity should begin at home, but unlike charity, it should end there." Let me conclude by saying I believe it is the sacred duty of every parent and guardian to carefully monitor what their child consumes, whether it's at the public library or at home online. Some parents may have no issue with their child checking out an adult-oriented book. I can disagree with that parenting decision all day long, but it's not my decision to make. You cannot abdicate your responsibility as a parent to monitor what your child reads and then cry foul when they read something you disagree with. It's certainly not the government's responsibility to co-parent your child. This means it's not society's or the government's job to raise your child, and it's definitely not a librarian's job to monitor what your child reads or what they check out. That job falls squarely on your shoulders, parents. If you don't want your child to read or check out Gender Queer, walk with them to the library and monitor what they're doing. Or just trust your child to respect the boundaries you've laid out. We can't expect society to conform to our standards or worldview. It's never gonna happen. Rather, it's incumbent upon parents to instill their own standards and worldview in their children. If the argument was that the library was requiring your child to read this book, I'd stand by your side and fight. That's not the fight here. The fight is whether or not a public library should be allowed to have this book in their circulation. The answer, if we truly support the Constitution and the law of the land, especially the First Amendment, is a resounding yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cargill.
Thank you, Mayor. Janie, I have some questions for you that I'm hoping you can answer. And can you, I don't know if the camera can get you right. Todd, can you get her there or does she need to go to the, okay, perfect. Can you tell me how it was decided that this book would be added to the library? I heard on one of the board meetings, someone say, or maybe it was actually in the last meeting that we had, someone was saying that we are the only library in our district or circuits, something to that effect, that has this book. Is that accurate?
So the book was added to the collection in November of twenty twenty. It was added to the collection by the adult services librarian for the adult nonfiction collection.
So she requested it?
The librarians, I'm a librarian and our teen and adult librarian curate the entire library collection. We buy all the books each month for the library.
So it was decided in November, you said November of twenty twenty?
Yes, that's when the book was ordered.
So that's when the library made the decision to order the book?
Yes, that's when the book was ordered.
And what kind of process went into that decision? Can you tell us about it?
We have a collection development policy that has guidelines of things that we look at when we're purchasing materials.
And so was this, is, was, did someone in particular say, oh, we should get this book or does it just appear on a list or?
We have lots of places that we look for, for materials. We have a book vendor that we buy materials from. They'll send us selection lists that list every book that's coming out during that month. We generally buy books each month. So we'll look at lists from our vendors. We'll look at lists from various like academic publications and look at things on the media, New York Times bestseller lists. We look at those things. So we look at a wide variety of places when we're purchasing materials.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for answering that. At the February, I went back and watched the February board meeting. And the library board at that time, when this issue came up, said that they felt like they had discussed it enough, they hashed it out enough over email, that, that no further discussion was really needed. Was there a lot of back and forth over email on this particular book?
I can't speak to that. I was on maternity leave.
Okay, do you know of anyone who could? Okay.
If you introduce yourself, Brad, that'd be great.
Sure.
Yes, there was discussion amongst the board members, pardon me. Oh, Brad Hamlet.
Library Board.
Yeah, a member of the board and currently the lead of the board at that time. So the, the request came in December twenty eighth. And we were given sixty days to review that material.
Right.
So it was brought to the attention of all the sitting members of the board. And we did have opportunities to review the material, discuss the material via emails and, and then convene on our meeting on December, on February, early February to, to support the decision made by the librarian.
I guess that, that's where I'm having a little trouble. If the decision was made or the, the arguments pro and con were made over email, that's, that's not public. Unless somebody makes a public records request.
The, the, the discussion was to read the book, discuss the book. Well, I can't say we discussed the book over email. I can say we, we discussed or talked about what the book was. Did you have an opportunity to get the book? Have you read the book? Can you weigh in on the books that we can make a decision in the, at our February meeting?
And, but no decision was made over email is what you're saying?
No, no decision.
Because it, it sure sounded like that from the conversation.
Well, I think you might have gotten the wrong impression by whatever you heard in that, from listening to that meeting. But the decision was made at that meeting based on the review of the book by each one of the members.
Okay. Janie, I just have a couple of more questions for you, or maybe actually this might be a question for Brad. Did, did the library board make any public notice other than what the minimum amount possible for that February meeting when they were discussing this? And, and let me, let me just preface that. The reason why I'm asking.
The answer is yes.
Okay, the reason why I'm asking is because I didn't see anybody on that call. And yet we had, you know, forty or fifty people here tonight speaking about, you know, obviously passionate people on both sides. So I'm kind of surprised that nobody would show up to the library board meeting if people knew about it.
Well, I'm gonna say this as delicately as I can. We did not get on Facebook and we did not post anything on Facebook about what we were discussing, but we did post it per requirements by the state on our, on the city website as to when our meeting was and what the agenda was going to be.
Okay, thank you. Janie, my, my follow-up question for you has to do with a couple of the items that were brought up by some of the public comments. I just want to play a scenario here. If somebody walked into the library tomorrow based on our decision today, somebody walked into the library tomorrow and requested that the library gets copies or subscribe to an adult magazine, for instance, what would the library's response to that be?
So you would put in a purchase request.
Right.
That purchase request would go to the librarian who curates that collection and they would look over the request, review the material, review our collection development policy and then make a decision.
So, so you're saying that, that the library wouldn't say no to that, but also wouldn't say yes, they would go through a lengthy process?
Yes, so the, we would not say, no, you can't have that book or that material.
Right.
We would just say, thank you for your request. This is being handed off to a librarian who will review your request and get back to you.
And so if that went to the librarian, based on the policies that you have in place today, would that be approved?
I, I don't know what magazine you're specifically talking about.
Let's say any adult magazine. Let's say Playboy.
We would review the request and then we would make a decision from the material.
Okay, I, I understand what you're saying, that you review the request. My question is, do you believe that based on the library policies now, that that request would be approved?
Are we prosecuting this right now? Are we ask, are we asking questions?
I'm asking questions because I think it's important to know.
I'm glad that you think it's important to know, but I'm asking whether or not we're prosecuting this or whether we're making comments and, and ask, asking and answering questions. And what, what if, what if, what ifs are not appropriate?
Well, I, I, I completely disagree. They are, they are very much appropriate and, and.
This is not supposed to be a discussion between councilmembers. Janie, if you're not comfortable answering the question, or you still have a question, are you unsure what the question is?
I'm unsure what the question is.
So if somebody asked you, asked the library to, to subscribe to Penthouse, what do you, what do you, and again, it's a what, what if, and I apologize, but on, off the top of your head, what do you think the result of that request would be based on your knowledge of the policy and the, and the, you know, the process you go through?
I think that the, the.
Let me rephrase the question and maybe this will make it a little bit easier. I guess my question is, is there a standard by which the library decides which books or which publications that it's going to have in place? And what would, what would meet that standard? That's what I'm trying to get at. That's what I'm trying to understand.
I'm just going to start. So we have a list of items that we go through when we're looking at materials to purchase. We have support for the library's mission and values, contents of the work and its significance or contribution to the diversity or breadth of the collection, evaluation of the work and professionally recognized critical review sources, authority, significance, competence of the author, producer or publisher of the work, accuracy and timeliness of the material, expressed or perceived interest or demand for the material, local interest, local history or community relevance, effectiveness and suitability of the format for a public library and impact on the material's budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? I do have some things from earlier. J V, I'll ask you to clarify in just a minute. Anybody else have any questions?
I don't have questions. I have a comment.
No, yeah, that too. Go ahead.
I find it difficult to follow Councilmember Baird because I think that some of the sentiments that she expressed so eloquently, I will never do justice to. So I'm gonna move on from some of that, but I've thought a lot about this as I have a child who is eleven and who might be in the library and potentially she loves graphic novels and might pick up this book. I guess my research was I read the book. I read it cover to cover. And I also reached out to several parents that I know who have LGBTQ youth in their homes to get their perspective on what the impact of removing this book would be from the library, the seen and unseen impact of removal of a book that is, that is meant for them. A few of the things that struck me about the materials in our packet, many of them have been mentioned tonight, so I apologize for the repetitiveness, but I also feel that they were important. The library upholds the right of individuals to secure resources, even though the content may be controversial and orthodox or unacceptable to some. The library's very collection is available to all. However, it's not expected that all the collection will appeal to everyone. The responsibility of publishers and librarians as guardians of the people's freedom to read, to contest encroachments upon that freedom by individuals or groups seeking to impose their own standards or tastes upon the community at large and by the government whenever it seeks to reduce or deny public access to public information. The freedom to read is of little consequence when the reader cannot obtain matter fit for that reader's purpose. A spokesperson for the National Coalition Against Censorship said book banning is damaging to all stakeholders, including learners who do not, who do not read stories that reflect the world around them and students from the marginalized groups depicted in the stories who learn that their own stories and their own lives are not fit for public consumption. The American Library Association released a statement condemning a few organizations which have advanced the idea that the voices of the marginalized have no place on library shelves, falsely claiming that these works are subversive, immoral or worse, and then inducing officials such as ourselves to abandon constitutional principles, ignore the rule of law and disregard individual rights to promote government censorship. This is an award-winning book. In twenty twenty, it won the Stonewall Honor Award. The Honor Book Award is a set of three literary, literary awards that annually recognize the exceptional merit relating to the gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender experience. The Alex Awards are given to ten books written for adults that have special appeal to young adults ages twelve through eighteen. I am concerned that removing this book may violate R C W forty-nine sixty point three zero, freedom from discrimination and, and civil rights. I could go into that, but it's getting kind of late. And anybody wants to read through that, they can. One of the things that I also came across, one of the youth that I reached out to directed me to an interview with the author. So I'm gonna read just a couple of things that she said in that interview. She said that, and I'm, I'm not even using the right pronouns and I apologize. They said, really the main audience I had in mind was my parents. Can I explain to them what I mean and where I'm coming from? I mean, I put everything that I thought was relevant to the story of gender and there are mentions of masturbation, period blood and a very brief encounter with a sex toy. But they're only lightly touched on because what's important is how they helped me think about my gender identity and that's what I was really trying to focus on. So I was like, I'm going to include these as much as needed to explain how they shifted my journey of self-discovery in regards to gender. One of the other, I think, poignant things that she said in the interview is that a book challenge is like the community attacking itself. The people who are hurt in the challenge are the marginalized readers in the community where the challenge takes place. That is readers who are younger readers who don't have the financial means to buy books if they are not available for free in the library. That is queer teens who may not feel comfortable bringing a book with such an obvious title into their home if they have parents who would only feel safe reading the book secretly in the library without even checking it out. It upsets me because I'm seeing it as a resource being taken away from queer marginalized youth. She also noted that if a book is being challenged, it probably means that it's saying something honest and vulnerable and it's true. The last thing that I took out of her interview was that parents have a right to a certain amount of saying what their own children read and experience, but you can't make that decision for everyone else's children as well. So in summary, generally I don't believe it's in the best interest of the citizens of Liberty Lake to ban any book from the public library. In fact, to date, there have been no books banned by the Liberty Lake Municipal Library. The citizen comments we received prior to the meeting were overwhelmingly supportive of the library and the Board of Trustees and their decision-making process. And again, I do not believe that this governmental body should engage in censorship. Specifically, I do not support the removal of gender queer from the library. Having read the book in totality, there is absolutely so much more to this book than a couple of cartoon images of genitals. I'm concerned that the purpose of this book has been summarily overlooked. The book has shocking parts. In all transparency, I was uncomfortable reading this book. This book is not a book that resonates with me as an individual, other than to generate empathy for the LGBTQ people in our community. This book is not for me. Because I read it and I was uncomfortable, I learned a number of things about the reality of gender identity and how it must actually feel to be gender, gender queer and how difficult it must be to describe to anyone ever. This book is for those who are on a different journey and have a paucity of resources to guide them. This book was probably a lighthouse in a storm to many youth and adults who have feelings described in this book. I would guess that ninety-nine percent of the library, of books in the library, material in the library have protagonists that are cisgender heterosexual. Guess on my part. Seven percent of Americans identify as LGBTQ and I would guess that it's higher as many live in fear of coming out and do not have resources such as this book to explore who they are, who they may be and how they are unique. There are not nearly enough resources that reflect their worldview and this is the definition of inequity. In support of the mission of the library to make books and resources available to all members of the community, I support the Board of Trustees' decision to keep gender queer on the shelves. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mayor Pertem.
Sure, I will next. Thank you. First of all, I, I'm not interested at all in banning a book in a library anywhere. It just, that's just not part of my DNA. Here's where my rub with this whole, um, situation comes in is we have a book that's in the adult section of the library. That is, we can agree to disagree, but it's directed at underage adults. Non-adults, is that a fair statement? Take it for what you want. It's, it's my opinion. It's not directed at adults. It's on our adult book section of our, of our library. Again, I'm not interested in banning the book, but according to, um, the documents we've been given. Each library develop, develops its own policies and criteria for collection development. So, I guess I'm wondering if we have an, any adult book, regardless if it's this one or any other adult book. If it's on the adult shelf, the policy today is, and maybe I'm wrong, correct me if I'm wrong, is a non-adult person can go into the library, check out the book, regardless of what it is. If it's on the adult section, they can check it out. Is that true?
Yes.
Correct. So for me, it's not the book, it's the policy. That allows a fourteen, my fourteen-year-old granddaughter to go to our library and pick a book off the adult shelf and walk out the front door with it. That, that's my struggle with this whole conversation.
So, um, so that's a kind of a good segue because, Janie, I was going to ask you to go through the reason why the library cannot, um, put limits on who can check out what. I know that's changed over the years because I know when I was a kid. There was a secret room at the library that I went to and it had the, but we don't, we don't, we didn't call them adult books, but you know, it's the over eighteen books. And if, gosh, if we set our foot in that room, we were in really big trouble. But that's not how the laws are now. Uh, I was looking for, for this specific citation as well, Janie, but I know there are. Because it's a public entity, and you can expand on this, we cannot put those limits on.
So in our library collection development policy, in the, I guess it's fourth paragraph, it says, while library customers are free to select or reject materials for their own use or for the use of their minor children, the freedom of others to use the library collection will not be restricted. Parents and guardians have the right and responsibility to guide and direct the use of the library collection for their own minor children. Library staff do not serve in place of parents in loco parentis in guiding children's use of the library collection. So that's directly from our library collection development policy. Um, in the library's freedom to read statement. There is no place in our society for efforts to coerce the taste of others to confine, to confine adults to the reading matter deemed suitable for adolescents. Or to inhibit the efforts of writers to achieve artistic expression. So because the library, the library is meant for all members of the public of all ages. We have to have materials in the library for all, all of those ages. They don't want the library to be restricted to just materials that are appropriate for adolescents. We don't want to restrict adults to only having materials that are suitable for children. That's why the library is organized the way it is. We have our adult collection. We have our young adult collection. We have our, sorry, I'm kind of gesturing how it's set up in the library. We have our juvenile collection, and then we have our children's collection. So that is to aid individuals when coming into the library. Guide parents to what areas of the library are suitable for their children. Um, so the library isn't organized completely alphabetically, A to Z. So you have animal books next to adult books, next to children's books. We have those separated into different categories to aid with that.
So, so the, the one piece that I, I was, I finally found it. Was with, with regards, there was a question on here about how are libraries different from movie theaters or bookstores, which have restrictions? And boils down to, as public institutions, libraries cannot discriminate based on origin, age, background, or views. Retail stores and theaters are businesses that may be required to or can choose to apply restrictions. But yeah, that's, that's major, major difference is why, because I was the kind of thinking the same thing. It's close, uh, just give me two seconds. Can we have a motion to extend the meeting? We're running up.
Make a motion to extend the meeting till ten thirty.
Second, okay, we have a motion in a second to extend the meeting till ten thirty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're extended to ten thirty. Right, um, that was, um, on our page one, one ninety-one. It was just an answer to a question. How are libraries different from movie theaters or bookstores, which often have restrictions for children and teens? It goes on, talking about, you know, movie ratings from the MPAA versus the, a public library.
And where did that statement come from?
That's from the ALAs page. I'm shuffling my papers, trying to see if I have the exact name of the article, but it's from the American Library Associations.
Well, I think the point that Councilmember Foyer is making is that the American Library Association is not, is not a governmental body that decides the, the law for every state or every community.
It's a nonprofit organization.
Right. So my point is, is we have a library policy that, that we can control ourselves. That's my point. So it's not a matter of do we do it because we can? It's a matter of should we do it? Should that be a part of our policy?
I know, I guess the question is, can we do that legally, being a public entity versus a private and, private business? That's the question we need to have answered.
Certainly restrictions with regard to private versus public. Uh, I don't think there's any question about that. I mean, I think that, I think when we're talking about two different things versus what the policy is versus what the legal argument is. And I think this is more, we're talking about a policy issue relative to can we change policies to do certain things? Yes, you can change policies to a certain extent, as long as they're not discriminatory. That's my question. Why, what, have we had a discussion about our policy regarding a matter such as this?
But wouldn't that discriminate against age?
It's an adult book.
You're discriminating against those under eighteen.
But thi- thi- this is exactly why I was asking a question earlier about what, what is the, what is the mechanism by which we decide what's appropriate and what's not appropriate? And that's what I was trying to get at with the adult magazine example. Is, is that something we'd say, absolutely, that's not appropriate? Or is that something that is fair game? And I don't know the answer to that question, which is why I was asking it.
Because there are books out there that are not available by even way of ebook through the library that maybe speak to a different tune, but they're not available, and I don't understand why not. So a conscious decision was made to bring this book into our library. A conscious decision could have been made to just offer it through the ebook. And let a parent be a parent. And if you want that book, check it out on ebook through the library. It's a decision was made to put it on the shelf. And there's decisions made, I'm sure, all the time. I'm not trying to give you a hard time here, but there's, the decisions have to be made, and that's what your job is. But, um, there's many, there's so many books out there, I understand you can't have them all. But there's gotta be, I, I guess I'm just asking for a review of our policy of how we choose what books go physically on the shelf. Because there's books that I would love to see on the shelf, but I can't even get them through the, through the e-service. So I don't want to get into that. But it should be a, a, an equal approach, I would think.
So, you know, that's obviously something we'll have to look at with the legalities of what can and can't be done. But I know you guys just went through in the last year or so, I think it was, or time flew by, uh, and total, and did a huge update on those, on those procedures, correct?
The, all of the policies, all of the library policies were updated in twenty nineteen. The board took a year and went over each policy individually.
Understand, and you, you can try to think of every scenario until something like this comes along, and then you think, oh, shoot, we didn't talk about that. I understand how that works. Um, and, and when you talk about legalities, uh, what legality does our polit, is our policy have to adhere to?
That's, that's what our action, we, we need to find that out. I don't know. And okay, Councilmember Van Orman.
Uh, Mayor Protem, Foyer, you, you covered that pretty well. It, it's a hard one to see a book, knowing that it's going to help somebody in the end. It was great reading the book, and I felt like I needed to read it from book to book, you know, from cover to cover, to make sure that how I was feeling, you know, kind of came out as well. But knowing my background of being a gruff safe house for, from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and seven, and seeing the grooming and the sex trafficking that's happened in that time. This book could have been written so much to where the graphic didn't have to even play in. It just seems like the porn industry is just pushing the envelope. I'm not one for banning books, but I certainly would like to see policy change. It, it shouldn't be checked out to kids that are under eighteen. That's my point.
Any other, um, Councilmember Baird?
Just to clarify, Mayor, we're not voting to change policy tonight. We're voting to uphold existing policy, correct?
Uphold the decision.
I think that's a crucial point of clarification. If y'all want to change the policy, let's workshop it and do it. Tonight's not the night to change policy. Even if you want to. I was, uh, going back and forth with a parent, and I, I had the similar question. You know, I, I wouldn't want a kid in my care to just go up and check something out without my authorization either, and there's nothing to prevent them. Except the parent. Take responsibility, accompany your child to the library if you don't want them checking out books. We cannot expect any government entity to parent our child. I know I said it before, but I'm a broken record. It's not Janie's job to tell my child, yes, you can check that out, or no, you can't. I would never abdicate that right to her or any government official. That is my right and mine alone.
Councilmember Cargill?
Thanks, uh, Mayor. I have to say, I, I don't like this issue at all. I think, um, I think it takes away from a lot of the togetherness that we have as a community, and it, it causes a lot of division. I spent a lot of time thinking about this over the past month or so when I first heard about it, and uh, I, I first of all, um, want to say to Erin, thank you for bringing it forward. Uh, because I think she's been treated a little bit unfairly, um, specifically in some online forums. Uh, simply because she disagrees with, with this, with this particular book. As Councilmember Baird said, I, I, I view the illustrations in the book as disgusting as well. Um, and I, I do make the distinction between the pictures and the text. And I think that's important to, to point out. While I disagree with the text and find much of it, you know, not in, not of my favor, um, I think we would be having a different conversation tonight if it were just text. The issue is the pictures and the illustrations that we saw tonight, we saw a couple of weeks ago. I think if you asked, if, if you stood at the Yokes or, or Safeway and you asked parents or asked just average citizens. Um, and you showed them some of these pictures, they would, they would be shocked that, that this exists in the, in the public library and public schools. The majority of the citizens that I've talked to ha, and have contacted me are, are also outraged. And again, I think there's a big distinction between the, the book itself, the, the text, and the pictures. And, y- y- you know, when someone put these images up on Facebook a couple of weeks ago, Facebook immediately took them down. Now, why did they do that? Because they were offensive. People, it was graphic content. It was graphic content. You know, I've said many, many times that I think banning, simply banning something is not leadership. I think it's a lazy way to go about leading, and we see it way too often in local governments and the state governments, uh, and in the national government. Where I draw the line is when it comes to children, and we limit what children can do all the time. We, children cannot have alcohol. Children cannot have cigarettes. Children cannot go to R-rated movies. Children can't do a lot of things. Why? Because children are impressionable. And when it comes to issues like this, I, that's the lens that I look at it from. I mean, we even tell children about an elderly man with a long white beard that delivers Christmas presents to them each December. And why do we tell them that? Because they believe it. They believe us. They're impressionable. As Councilmember, uh, Van Orman, uh, was discussing, uh, the American, I, I, I spent a lot of time researching this. The American Bar Association says there are specific behaviors that are used to, to groom children. They include discussing sexually explicit information under the guise of education and quote, showing children sexually explicit images. In twenty twenty-one, the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, uh, the Cyber Tipline received a twenty-nine point three million reports of child sexual exploitation. That's a thirty-five percent increase from twenty twenty. Child pornography is a form of child exploitation. And while some of these pictures are not of actual children, they're illustrations. I still, I think they have a similar effect. The Supreme Court has held that the government can criminalize the mere possession of child pornography. And we can have a debate back and forth about whether this is, is or is not child pornography. It's clear to me that the images in this book are of teenagers in sex acts. And I know some people say the book is about adults and the illustrations are, uh, a question here. But the U.S. Justice Department says child pornography is any, any visual depiction of sexually explicit conduct involving a minor, any. Um, when I first heard about this issue, um, I thought back to something that Justice Antonin Scalia said, and he said, sometimes you have to make decisions that you hate. Because they're, they're the right decision. And that's what I thought, that's the position I thought I would be in tonight is, is making a decision that I hated. That even though I had concerns about the book, it would stay. And if the library had a function to keep it out of the hands of children, that's the position that I would take. But what's clear from the policy right now is that there is not, that no such policy exists, and that anybody can, can check it out at any time. I personally don't buy the arguments that this is just a book for adults. I mean, it's specifically targeted at teens. Barnes and Noble says the target age is fifteen. As we've talked about tonight, the book received a, an award uh, from the American Library Association for being, quote, of special interest to teens. So there's no question, this is a book that's targeted at teens. I'm, I mentioned earlier that I was disappointed with the library board, uh, the February meeting, because I, I didn't think that, that they discussed the issue publicly enough. I thought it, but it should have been more of a public discussion. I just want to make something specifically, explicitly clear. We are not talking about banning a book in Liberty Lake. All we're talking about is whether it's appropriate for this book to be on the shelf at the library. Anybody can still read this book in Liberty Lake? Anybody can go on Amazon and buy this book if they want? Anybody can go to Barnes and Noble and buy this book if they want? There is nothing that we are deciding here tonight that says we are banning this book or we're not banning this book. A poll taken just last week showed that seventy percent of the American people think we should not expose children to sexual topics without the consent of their parents. Seventy percent. And that was just last week, a poll that was taken last week. One thing is for certain, at least from my perspective. If, if this stays on the shelf, whether it be in, in the adult section or the children's section, and children can still check it out. I'm gonna feel very uncomfortable about letting my kids go to the library. And I think many other parents in the community will as well. Let me just say one final thing. Instead of having a discussion about whether we should ban a book. I think the discussion should be about the policies that we have in place. And so I appreciated what Councilmember Foyer had to say about that. I would prefer a policy be put in place to limit who can check it out. And I E. kids, not any adults, but kids. Um, and as was said in the public comment, freedom of speech is not freedom of audience. It does not entitle anybody to have an audience. And there are many, many more controversial. And there are many, many more controversial books, to Councilmember Foyer's point, that are not in our library. Why are they not in our library? I think a lot of people are probably asking that that question tonight. So, thank you.
Councilmember Solberg hasn't spoken yet. Or he did earlier.
I too appreciate Phil, your your perspective on the policy, but that's not what's before us right now. And Mr. Cargill has has voiced that as well. When we get the chance, let's take a look at it. The only time that I've looked at this book, the only time that I've seen anything is when two times people pulled a a depiction of a sex act in this room on Zoom in front of us, on Zoom where the kids can be watching it, and I was offended. Now, I spent a lot of time seeing this in action. Don't tell me about sex offenders and and depictions of minors and the rest. But I had to make decisions as to whether or not to put people in prison or let them out after they did it. And I have it in my own family where an offense occurred. So, this is not that. This is about censorship. Okay, maybe it's not in your point of view about censorship. In my point of view, it is. And from the perspective of the majority of the people that we have heard from our community, it is. And I, in no way, shape or form, would want to, I didn't want to read the book and 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 whoever it was that looked at the entire book, good for you. That's not a book that I'd ever read and I wouldn't want to have it in my home. But I parented and I parented alone with my kids and they wouldn't dare it. Had they brought it in, we would have had to have the discussion. But I'm not going to abdicate that. And and I do not believe that censorship in this case. Taking a look at policy later and going over that, I think, is only responsible and the library does it every once in a while anyway. And so that's a normal course of business. If you want to talk about offense, we had the most graphic depictions that are in that book brought to this room twice. And I never had to look at it once until I came here. So, there's a little bit of hypocrisy here in terms of when you're going to be presenting things and who your audience is. So, I stand with the Board of Trustees and the library policies that we have currently. And if we need to take a look at them in the future, so be it.
Did you have another?
Oh, yes, thank you. Tom, I appreciate your comments. I don't totally agree with you. I'm fifty percent of the people or the majority of the people want us to keep this book on the shelf. I'm not in favor of taking it out of the library. All I'm asking is, I've been asking myself this question ever since this topic came up. What, why is there such a strong desire to have a physical copy on the shelf when there's so many other avenues to access this this book? It's not just this book, any adult book, I guess, is where I'm coming from. It's not the content of this book. It's the fact that the content of it is meant to be for adults. It's on the adult shelf. So, I I just, why do we need a hard copy in the shelf when there's other alter, other ways to get access to it? And I know we have a motion on the table and I know I want to get into policy. You're right, that's a discussion for another day. That was not my intent tonight. However, with with the motion, the way it's been stated, I guess I'm, when I came into the meetings and I was thinking, is there any maneuvering, allowable maneuvering within, from our library director, our counsel and so on, to have a discussion about, take the hard copy off, give it to whoever wants it. Through ebook, there's other sources, correct?
The book is available in hard copy and on ebooks.
Right.
Yes. It was published that way.
So, I I I guess I'm trying to understand what's the strong desire to have it on the shelf, a physical copy?
So, before I go to.
That's not the motion that's before us.
Right, so hold on. So, before I go to Councilmember Kurtz. So, Jandy, we are part of the Cooperative Information Network. We partner with, is that the right, CIN? And this book is at other libraries in our network. Some, if I remember correctly, some, what, at least one library has more than one copy? Was that a true, somebody told me that. I don't know if that's true.
Mayor?
Don't hold on just a sec, because you had asked the question.
Right.
Somebody made the statement that nobody else in the inland northwest had spent money purchasing this, purchasing this book for a library or school.
No, that that was not the statement. I I was asking because at the library board, I can't remember her name. Who was the acting librarian and?
It was Joanne.
Joanne Percy?
It wasn't Joanne, it was another one. Anyways, she made the statement that in the cooperative that you're talking about, we were the only ones who had it. That's what she said. That's why I was asking.
Which, from what I, when I was talking to somebody else, there are other libraries in the Cooperative Information Network that have this book.
Currently, we are the only library in the Cooperative Information Network that has the book as of today.
Oh. That has been. Do they have them before?
Huh?
No, nothing. I was saying, because so then they assume the information I got was wrong. But the point I was.
I think that a lot of people get our library network mixed up with Spokane County Library District. So, that could be the the confusion.
The the point I was going to make is if if one of these other libraries does have it or somebody requests them, they have it and they buy it, somebody can request that library, that book to be transferred to the Liberty Lake Library for somebody to check out. Just so people are aware of that. So, go ahead, Councilmember Kurtz.
I think the concern that I have about limiting or taking the book off the shelf and and putting it more in the electronic format is it does limit access to people who do not have resources, which is one of the points of a public library. We live in a very nice, middle-class town where most people probably have a device to read a book on. And and I think we forget that there are people in this town who do not have the same resources as everybody else. Thank you.
Councilmember Baird? You want to make a book more accessible to kids, put it online. Straight up.
Well, I I was, I I try to stay out of the discussion, but seeing as how the discussion has gone, I I feel like I should weigh in. As a conservative Christian woman with a transgender nephew, this this is a hard one for me. Yes, the 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 graphics were a little shocking. But for me, it's not about the content, it is, but where it is the policy and did the selection of this book follow the policy? I remember as a kid, some of you may not know who Larry Flynt is, others will. The the published, former publisher of Penthouse. I remember getting in my parents' junk drawer in the kitchen in the seventies and he fought, you know, obviously there were lots, there was a lot of litigation around Larry Flynt and free speech and all that. Well, he sent a publication to every mailbox, at least in the city, in the city of Cincinnati and the suburbs, that had horrific images from Vietnam, which was going on at the time, of bodies blown apart. I I I am tearing up just just thinking about it. And I I saw that as a kid. To me, that was offensive. And my point is that offensive is different for other people. And nobody is forcing any parent or any child to read this book, unlike the picture that was forced upon us in two meetings and forced upon people online. Nobody's forcing me to read this book. If if it was required reading at school, I'd be having a different conversation. But, you know, parents are wanting to be more involved with the selections at school. So, why don't they want to be involved with with monitoring what their kids are checking out of the library? I'm I I'm not about to take that choice away from people. It's on, it's in the adults, adult biography section. The, it was clarified to me that those, I don't know, the the red pow stickers on the graphic novels are only on the, are are not, was not on this one or is it, you say it's only on the adult ones?
It's only on the adult.
Yeah.
Books, not the juvenile or young adult graphic novels. So, it wasn't removed.
Yeah, so I wanted to just just clarify that. But for me, you know, did did the book selection follow the policy? Yes, it did. Is is anybody forcing me to read this? No, they're not. And I'm not about to take that choice away from people. Again, it was a hard decision. And I'm sure it's something I'll struggle with either way, depending, no matter what happens tonight. But, you know, upholding the rights of the citizens to make their own choice is paramount in my mind. Maybe you have any other discussion?
I have a last one.
Sure.
Comment.
Yeah.
I guess I really feel like I'm backed into a corner here because I'm not going to vote to ban a book from the library, regardless of what book it is. Decision, a decision was made to purchase, it sounds like we're the only ones in town, to purchase a hard copy of this book. And now I'm being, the motion is to uphold the Library Board of Trustees' decision to retain material that aligns with the Liberty Lakes Libraries Collection Development Policy. I'm, I just, I don't have a choice in this vote and it really pisses me off to tell you the truth. And I don't know. Just know when I vote, it's not because I'm in favor of what's going on.
Thank you. Councilmember Cargill?
Can I ask clarification? What happens if the council vote tonight is to not uphold the decision? That does not mean the book is banned, right? It goes back to the library board or?
No. Taken out of the library. Banned and deleted and removed from the library collection.
Well, I think we've had a lot of discussion. So, if there's no more comments, I will go ahead and call for the vote. And I do ask for this to be a hand vote, so I can make sure I have everybody down correctly. So, let's write, all in favor of upholding the library, oh, yes, here, excuse me?
No, they're just talking.
Okay, sorry. Oh, and I, and I, we don't normally do this before I call for the vote. I do know, we, there is another library board member on Zoom and he had a while ago had asked to to make a comment since they were integral in this in this process. Tim Olson, did you, did you still want to make a comment or do you, or should I just go ahead to the vote?
Yes, Mayor, I'd just like to couple of quick comments here. I just want to mention that with Councilmember Cargill's cross-examiner, cross-examination of Janey, she may not know what Playboy or Penthouse is. I think that's really unfair to put her on the spot in this cross-examination. Brad's testimony was exactly true. The the board only discussed access to the book since we looked at it. It was no decision was made other than in a public meeting. I want to be very clear on that, that we had no discussions made on email whatsoever. And that I didn't really see many people, if I can even remember correctly, even attend from the public, our meeting. Also, Councilmember Cargill, you did quote some really interesting polls, but you have no background or data about those opinions. The discussion is only about bringing and borrowing this book in our library, which has no, it's not, it's not even relevant here. It's 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 whether or not we allow this to be on the, in there at all. We're not talking about policy tonight. I I appreciate all of your thoughts. I think they're very well-founded. This was not an easy decision and I'd like to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll go ahead and call for the vote then. All in favor of holding the Library Board of Trustees' decision on February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two to retain material that aligns with the Liberty Lake Libraries Collection Development Policy, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
So, we get. And died.
Is that a yea?
Yeah, I haven't called for the nays yet. So, so it looks like I've got four in favor and two opposed. Kelsey, I'll have the, have that breakdown for you. So, motion passes to uphold the decision four to two. Thanks, guys. This is a very, very tough, tough subject, no matter where you stand on it. Appreciate everybody's patience. Okay, we are up to council comments. I know we have one, Councilmember Baird.
Thank you, Mayor. Council staff, as I emailed you all last week, tonight will be my last meeting. That was a very bittersweet email to send. My original intent was to only leave office when the voters said so. That being said, as we're expecting a little one, the desire was to move closer to family. I think it's, you know, always good to, I I know my mom would probably kill me if she didn't have a grandbaby to spoil in person. That being said, my husband was also just presented with a job opportunity that was just too good to pass up and everything aligned. So, it is with great sadness that I will be resigning my seat effective the end of our meeting tonight. My hope is that someone from the community will volunteer and not just one person, but hopefully many. I would love to see this seat to be vigorously jockeyed for. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Well, Jamie, of course, we didn't give us, give us much notice. So, I I don't have the 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 traditional eagle for you or a joke gift, but we do have a certificate. And this probably will, this shows up on the other camera, not Zoom. So, we do have a certificate of appreciation for you, not only for the time you've been with us here, which is way too short, but for all of your contributions on planning commission, you're a huge asset and really appreciate all the the due diligence you put in while you're on that commission and all the contributions you've made. But I guess I do ask, since I don't have any other other party gifts, you know, if you can just, you know, give the baby the middle name of Liberty, I think we would all just be really thrilled.
I might get vetoed on that, but I was asking if it's possible to make my house in North Carolina incorporated into the city limits. If so, I rescind my resignation.
Well, we we really appreciate it and we'll we'll be, we'll, we'll certainly miss having you.
Thank you.
And and she's moving quick next, next week, right?
The twelfth.
Yeah, so it's happening fast. Sister City. Yeah, oh, yeah, there you go. So, real quick, can I have another quick motion, maybe to extend another ten minutes? A motion to extend the meeting by ten minutes. Okay, second, we have a second by Councilmember Baird. And so we can just get through the last piece of this. Are there any other council comments?
Need a vote.
Oh, yeah, sorry. All in favor of extending for ten more minutes to ten forty, say aye. I don't see any opposed. All right, no more council comments, all right? No public hearings, no resolutions, no ordinance, no emergency ordinances, introduction of upcoming agenda items. So, let's pull that up. We had quite a few things to add here. Kelsey, do you have that or Todd, can you go to that page with the upcoming agenda items? So, just real quick while they're pulling that up. May nineteen, May seventeenth, our next meeting at six P M., we have the Trailhead Mini GMP. We have this, at seven P M., we have the Future of Utility Tax Discussion. We also have Code of Ethics Social Media. Did you want to move that, Councilmember Kurtz, because I knew you were going to, and this might be a surprise to David, but Councilmember Kurtz is going to get with you on that. Do you want to remove that or do you want to give a quick move it? Okay, so we will move, remove the Code of Ethics off of our workshop on the seventeenth. And then we have the Library Board Workshop follow-up from the presentation we had at the last regular meeting. So, it sounds like May seventeenth is pretty full. I've got notes here for follow-up workshops for ARPA, Possible Granicus Training. Now, I'm sure we have a workshop or update on library policy. We'll put that on TBD. I know there's one I was missing. Well, that's a follow-up on, that's, that's the, yeah, that, that's Councilmember Solberg, that's what I meant, the library workshop follow-up. That's what that is. That's already scheduled for the next meeting. All right, so there's no, no other ones?
There is a, sorry to interrupt. There is a change I'd like to note for the Future of Utility Tax. Kyle Dixon will actually be out of town for the seventeenth, so that'll be the first weekend, first council meeting in June instead.
All right, so we can move that. So, that brings us down to six o'clock on the seventeenth and two at seven. And I, and then we've got some other TBDs. So, if it's okay with the council, we'll get this updated with the TBDs and propose some some dates and times fairly soon on some of the other workshops that came up today. And that, that's the Trailhead at six o'clock on the seventeenth. Yep. All right, does that work for everybody? We'll get that out. And we are up to citizen comments again. So, if, hold on, hold on, hold on. So, if there's any citizen who would like to comment, you know, just like I said before, comment only, you have up to three minutes. If anybody on Zoom would like to make a comment, please send Todd Henderson chat and he will notify me that you want to make a comment. So, we have Mark Saba back at the podium for citizen comments tonight.
Do you guys realize that Jamie is the second councilperson that North Carolina stole from us? Isn't that Holly?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, well, I guess we all need to move to North Carolina then. All right. Oh, yeah, duh. That was the other thing. Thank you. Yeah, so, yeah, that was the elephant in the room that I didn't mention before. So, since we have a few more minutes, so, council, oh, sorry.
I wanted to say something.
Absolutely. Sorry, I got a little mixed up. Go ahead.
I wasn't planning on talking.
Can you give us your name real quick?
Molly. Molly Merkel.
Nice to meet you.
I'm an outsider, came as a person from the L G. I'm an outsider, came as a person from the LGBTQ community. So I had a little bit of interest in how this went. I just wanted to say that I attend a lot of meetings, you know, city council for Spokane. Just as an attendee, the school board meetings on a regular basis. And I feel like what transpired here and here was really inappropriate. She answered his question repeatedly, and I feel like just, I just wanted just tell you as an outsider watching that that should have been stopped long before it was. She very clearly said there was a process, and he just kept coming after her. And I just wanted to give that perspective.
I appreciate, we don't see it often, so sometimes it's hard to decide what to do. I appreciate that. So is there anybody on Zoom? And then I'll get back to Todd. Was there anybody? Okay. All right, DG Garcia, we'll bring you up, and then we'll we'll talk about the council timing in just a moment. Welcome.
Thank you. And Councilmember Baird, I will miss you. You know how I feel about you. You are kind, you are thoughtful, and I appreciate you. And tonight I witnessed true leadership, all close and personal from you, Member Councilmember Baird. Notwithstanding your premise, which would be a well-rounded, profound admission, if it were a PhD candidate's dissertation. But I'll go one step further. There was a time when people, human beings now protected by the Constitution, were banned from communities, and their voices were censored as they were considered three-fifths of a person. The book in question cannot even be checked out without being of said documented age or without the parent's permission. The fact still remains that the policy has determined that a parent be a parent. The policy is clear that this is the current direction. We go to Italy and see the sixteen Sistine Chapel and admire the sculptures. Do we cover their eyes? That is a question. The library staff has made it clear that should a child approach in the appropriate age, they would be granted permission. But should they not have that age, they would need their parent. As far as polls, a seventy percent could have represented five hundred people. So let's be clear that polls are only indicative of whatever side wishes to promote that point of view. Now let's consider something else, you said, Councilmember Baird. As I will paraphrase, both being profound and enlightened. When one takes a look at the organizational chart of this city government, it sees at the top the citizens. But that is the hardest thing for many leaders, including leaders in Liberty Lake, to see and understand what that means completely and act accordingly. Tonight, you, Councilmember Baird, were that person who demonstrated with being a leader who has a fiduciary responsibility to include the voices of people whenever possible, always and in all ways. If Councilmember Baird, if your quote is indicative of the way I feel, having sat on that council for almost four months, and while I oftentimes express the same things you did, most of the time, if not all of the time, it fell on deaf ears. Because most of the council, although they shared the same sentiments, felt the silence because perhaps they did not want to support the messenger or be isolated by the remainder of the community or the council members. So to quote you, you're tired of this constant exclusion and what has taken so long to include the citizens? Therefore, I echo, I stand beside that voice, your voice. I stand on the sidelines with you without fear or favor to support that finally someone else has said what many have been saying all along. I thank you. I will miss you. God bless you.
Thank you very much. And we also have Tim Olson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to first by saying it's hard to follow up a comment like that by DG, whom I respect and 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 echo her comments with regards to what she was discussing. I'd like to pay a compliment to Councilmember Cargill. You brought up a really good point tonight to the interest earned on the cash that we have at the bank. The Fed's going to raise rates tomorrow by fifty basis points. We'll probably get another seventy-five to a hundred by the end of the year, according to popular belief, not by me. What does that actually generate an interest for our community? I think as we continue to make these decisions, which are very difficult decisions on what we do with the A R P funds, that you are definitely owed that answer, and I look forward to hearing in future council comments about what we're going to be able to earn on that, because I think it could be substantial. Thank you. Thanks all. Have a good night.
Thanks very much. All right. Absolutely.
Oh. Sorry, I don't want to take a bunch of time.
Jen Spencer again.
Jen Spencer, River District. Earlier, when when I spoke, I was obviously nervous that, again, this first time I've kind of done this sort of thing. One thing I wanted to point out, and and since I'm not not bound by the rules you guys were were had is regarding this policy, because I had printed off this this paper regarding the selection of library materials. There's about nine different points, and only one of them has to be met in order to bring something into circulation. So by that same logic, you could take one of these things and have something removed from circulation. And again, just like, just like it's been said multiple times, I'm not in favor of removing books. But there needs to be a tighter policy for how they come in and how they go out. This this policy and and this third party that has created these recommendations aren't tight enough. And so I think we can, most of us can agree that the material that that we've seen is shocking, and we want to protect children. But the way it's set up currently in our city, in our library district, it's not tight enough. And so I applaud you guys for, you know, saying, let's, let's talk about this. Let's have this conversation. Because I think that's where we're going to find some agreement for those who are for keeping the book and for those who are for removing the book. If we make it a little bit harder for stuff to come in and go out, and we can all agree on that, I think we can find success there. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, I'm just watching the clock again here. Okay, got four minutes. We'll talk really fast. So I'm looking at the calendar. So given that Councilmember Baird is, resignation is effective after this meeting, we can work on getting the posting out for for this opening as soon as possible, tomorrow, next day, as soon as we can get that together. My main question to you guys is, how long would you like to leave it open? I personally feel the last time, I know we were kind of, we wanted to get the position filled because we had some things coming up that were were pretty, we really wanted a full council for. I don't see anything so controversial coming up in the next several meetings. So my 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 request would be that we leave it open a little bit longer than last time. So today's the third. We don't get it posted till Wednesday, Thursday. Would you guys consider leaving it open through the end of the day on the twenty-seventh? That would give a week to, before the next meeting, to to go through the applications, make sure they're eligible and get get the copies out to the council before the seventh, and then we can figure out. Maybe we could talk again on the seventeenth as to if you guys want to do a special meeting or try to do it during a regular one. Does that timing work for you guys? Okay. All right, we will keep following up. So we'll get that posted as soon as possible, have it closed, end of the day on the twenty-seventh. And we'll revisit when we'll do interviews at the next meeting. All right, got two minutes to spare. Yes, sir. No, well, good for me. I just want to make sure that Kelsey and team have enough time to go through and vet it. So if you want to leave it. That works for me, you know, taking Councilmember Cargill's point before about there's a holiday in there. So, yeah, if you guys want to leave it open till the first, we can do that.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay, and we'll, we'll, we got the directors meeting tomorrow. We'll make sure everybody's up to speed. All right. Thanks, guys. Long night. Good discussions, and we will follow up. Have a good night, everybody. We are adjourned if there's no objections. We are, we are adjourned.